Hello and welcome to the Pittsburgh City Council Budget Hearings. I am Councilwoman Barb Warwick, standing in for Councilman Coghill. And I, well, I do not chair the Committee for Public Safety and Wellness, but Councilman Coghill does. But at any rate, very happy to be here in his stead. So for this hearing, we will hear from the Department of Public Safety, the Bureau of Animal Care and Control, the Bureau of Emergency Medical Services, and the Bureau of Fire. So I'd like to invite those from the Bureau of Animal Care and Control to join us at the table. And while we're doing that, we'll have our Budget Director, Peter McDevitt, give us an overview of the department.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Thank you.
The mission of the Department of Public Safety, Bureau of Animal Care and Control, is to serve the residents of the city of Pittsburgh by providing care, control, education, and resolutions to situations dealing with domestic animals and wildlife. The Bureau is made up of core services and programs, including Title VI of the Pittsburgh Municipal Code Enforcement, collecting stray domestic animals, assisting in the resolution of neighbors, advising residents in their rights and responsibilities in relation to the pet ownership, safely releasing non-rabies vector wildlife species to approved wildlife rehabilitation centers, implementing quarantine procedures for bite cases, removing and disposing of deceased animals, assisting residents with animals they may not be physically able to handle, managing the City of Pittsburgh's Spay and Neuter Program, issuing citations, assisting police officers with investigations, and attending community meetings and events to educate residents about urban wildlife. There is a total of 17 full-time positions out of the General Fund in 2026, which is no change from last year. And overall, for non-personnel changes, there is a $154,000 increase for the Humane Animal Rescue Contract for Animal Detention. And there is a short list of fees in the fee schedule there for you. That's all I have.
Hey, good morning. My name's Leishman. I'm the Public Safety Director for the city of Pittsburgh.
Charles Showers, Manager of Personnel and Finance for Public Safety.
David Madden, Supervisor of Pittsburgh Animal Care and Control.
And as with Tuesday's hearings, we have a small presentation for the Bureau's accomplishments and status for 2025. And while I am bringing that up, I'd just like to give a quick shout-out to the Personnel and Finance teams across Public Safety and thank them for their year-round work in making sure that we are adhering to our fiscal responsibilities. So, thanks, everybody. And with that, we have our slideshow up on the screen. You all have hard copies in front of you, so I will get us kicked off here. There we go. All right. And Director McDevitt already discussed some of the mission statements of the Bureau, so these are more for reference than anything. And similarly, he also discussed the organizational status of the Bureau. One supervisor, one assistant supervisor, 15 officers. And there is an accounting specialist from Public Safety Administration who is assigned to the Bureau. And with that, we're going to go into some of our statistics for the year. These are through September 2025, or into September of 2025. And I'll turn it over to Supervisor Madden.
So as you can see, yes, we continue to take in a large number of dogs. Cats has been staying pretty low over the last few years. Wild animals continue to be high. Raccoons will probably meet or exceed the number from 2024 for the rest of this year. Everything else is pretty much where it would normally be. As far as dead animals go, we haven't really seen an increase in the number of deer, even though there's been the Deer Calling Program through the city parks. But we haven't really seen an increase in the number of dead deer. And that's mainly from the fact is the deer hunters are very good. And so they're taking their kills with them. So as far as calls go, again, we've seen a slight decrease from last year to this year. I'm unsure why that would be. And then rodent abatement did hit lower than it was in 2024. Again, unsure as to why that would be. But as far as the numbers go, like I said, that's pretty much status quo. And then we get into our new system. We have a new software system called Pet Logic. It is helping us to keep better track of statistics. For instance, really, next year, we're still getting into the full system now. But starting next year, if you wanted to know how many dead deer were removed from a specific neighborhood, we would be able to tell you that. And before, we couldn't do that. Plus, it gives the officers more information right at their fingertips. They can look up an address at any point because we have laptops in the vehicles. The Spay-Neuter Program, we were able to start that up again a little later than we thought, but it is going strong now. Now the application is online. So instead of waiting for people to send it in or get lost in the mail or whatever, they can complete it online. They can upload all the documents that are necessary for them to qualify for the program. And it's been working really well. Plus, we're able to tell right away whether or not they actually live within the city of Pittsburgh or not. So that could stop people from outside the city of Pittsburgh trying to utilize our very important program.
Okay. And as with the Tuesday hearings, we've included here just the pages from the budget published recently, just for reference. And then we come to the summary pages, again, touching on the things, some of the highlights, the hiring of the new assistant supervisor, the Go Live of our records system, the initiation of the new Spay and Neuter Program. And as Director McDevitt noted, the only major change to the budget is in regards to our contractual obligations with Humane Animal Rescue. And that concludes that portion of the slide deck. So I'll turn it over to Dr. Lord Council.
Yeah, any questions?
Yeah, Councilman Wilson? Does anyone know?
Okay. Thank you, Chair. Thanks for being here.
You're welcome.
And just overall, how do you think the state of the Bureau is?
Yours is going well. As of Monday, the first, I actually will be in the process of hiring our 15th and final full-time officer. So finally be back up to full staff for the first time in almost two years.
That means you have two more positions you could fill?
No, that's it.
I thought it was 17.
Ah, that includes the assistant supervisor and the supervisor.
Oh, I got you.
That's why, no. We're at full capacity right now. And like I said, with the laptops in the trucks, it's helping us to keep better track of all the calls that come in instead of just the ones that involve what would be called advisors, barking complaints, and things like that. We're keeping track of my officers trying to catch a black and white dog running loose over in Shorters Neighborhood. They record that call. All the dead animals that are picked up, they're all being recorded as to be where they're being picked up.
Okay. And we're still dropping off animals at Western Avenue?
I'm sorry?
On Western? What's the?
Oh, no, mainly over off of Hamilton Avenue. We normally don't, yeah. We only use Western when they say they're too full over off of Hamilton Avenue. Or if the officers are involved in something on the north or south side. And then sometimes we can drop them off at Western. Yes, that is correct.
Thanks. And then how long is that contract? Will we see that next year or the year after?
The detention contract runs, I believe, through '27.
Okay. And that's also where we do the Spay-Neuter?
It is coincidentally, we are using HARP for both services, but it's not the same contract. The detention contract is separate from Spay-Neuter. But I believe they're also, it also runs for three years.
We do do that at that facility?
Yes. It's a separate contract, but...
Yeah, separate contract. I understand. And then in terms of your budget, what numbers? I see you both have a, you know, our Budget Office has a page here, and then you have a slide. Imagine they line up probably the exact same numbers. So, yeah, hopefully. What numbers here are projected? Like are a projection?
Projected in the budget?
Yeah.
Anything under the 2026 column? And I mean, 2025 is projected for this year, but...
Where's the one for overtime?
It's premium pay.
Premium pay. So... 220. So the projected premium pay looks pretty on target for, it looks like there'd be only 2,000 off from what spent in 2024.
We had a lot more overtime this year because of the number of officers I had off on medical leave. But hopefully, we're past that, especially with hiring of the 15th full-time officer. So overtime really should not be at all bad next year.
So you think you'll come in a little higher than 118?
Actually, no, probably be lower.
Okay.
Yeah.
Am I reading that right? It's projected to come out at 118?
That's, yeah, that's what's budgeted. 2025, we'd have to get you where we are with their premium pay right now, but...
Okay. Yeah, not as significant as other bureaus. That's why I'm kind of using you all as a practice for the big ones coming up.
With them being so much smaller, they obviously aren't going to accrue as much overtime.
I understand.
As Dave said, you know, they are almost at full staff this year, so that should help.
Yeah. At the moment, last report I have is that they are running slightly over, running a bit over. They are just shy of 200,000 for the year to date.
Okay. All right, thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you. And we're joined by Councilwoman Smith?
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman.
Oh, and also Councilman Lavelle is on the line.
Do you want to take him first?
No, you're fine.
I'm good. I'm here all day.
Oh, okay, okay. Councilman Lavelle, do you have questions for animal control? Okay, sounds good.
Thank you, thank you. And Director, I want to thank you for, anytime I've had an issue, I've always called you and you've always taken care of it when it comes to this kind of stuff, or a lot of things. And you've just been really, really great to work with. So I want to thank you for everything you've done for the city of Pittsburgh and for District, too, especially. But I do want to say that we are having a lot of issues with animals across the city of Pittsburgh. And I heard Councilman Wilson, a little bit of what he was saying, and you mentioned Shorters Avenue. But it's not, Shorters Avenue has a lot of issues, but the entire city does. I mean, I said, I look like, my son lives in a rural area in Virginia, and they have absolutely no issues with the animals. They have nothing. They come to my house in the city of Pittsburgh, their deer, raccoons, cats, dogs, I mean, everything. And I'm just wondering what we're doing to address the issues in terms of, listen, I want to be honest with you. I know animal activists have a lot of things they want to say, but I'm pretty fed up with organizations running the city of Pittsburgh. I want us to do what we have to do for the public, not just for organizations. So could you tell me a little bit about what we're planning on doing to address some of the issues? Because they can't continue the way they are.
What we're doing, I think we're doing is, you know, we could always do more. I certainly will agree with that. But we're doing as much as we can with what we have. I mean, we have a live animal trapping program. We have...
So you have, but how long do you have to wait for a trap?
This year alone, I don't think anybody had to wait more than a week for a trap. We're really doing the best we can. But I have to limit the number of traps that I put out because my officers only have so many, you know, so many hours in the day, and they have all these other calls that they have to do. So...
What could we do to help you in this budget?
In this budget alone, I think, I mean, I had asked, you know, I guess maybe more officers. You know, if I had more officers and maybe one or two more trucks, we could do a little bit more as far as trapping is concerned. But trapping still has to be limited as far as it goes. But a lot of people have their own traps, and we're still servicing those.
Director, are you thinking or talking about any other partnering like we do with Fire, with Wilkinsburg and Ingram? Are you thinking about doing that with other departments, including Animal Care and Control?
We have had some conversations with surrounding municipalities, specifically Wilkinsburg and Mount Oliver. However, most of them find it cost prohibitive. There's no requirement for any municipality to provide animal control services. So many municipalities around us do not have that service. If they do, it's often contracted just to do simple things like picking up dead animals. They may do a trapping program, but a lot of them don't do that either. They leave it up to the homeowners to do their own trapping and whatever happens to the animals from there. I think we do have to realize we are in a city, but we're also in a very wooded, you know, we have a lot of woods and parks and et cetera. So it's a large area for animals to thrive, and we don't have natural predators, which is why, you know, we did start the deer calling program. We do have the...
And I do want to thank you and Chief Frank for working on that and getting that started.
Yeah. And I think that's been very successful. And now it's expanded, you know, pretty much throughout the city. And I think we just need to continue that, those efforts to, A, manage the population with controls, but then also doing, continuing to do education programs like Dave's team and our park rangers do around living with wildlife. You know, things like making sure trash cans are, which is, I know, turns into another conversation. But trash cans are secured, those sorts of things, to keep that type of activity from raccoons especially, possums, et cetera, down. And then also just understanding that, you know, things like rabbits and the cats, we do have the Spay and Neuter Program back up and running. There's a lot of ways we can manage wildlife, but we're also, under the restrictions that the state gives us around wildlife, Dave can't do anything more than the game commission, even with us with the deer program. We can only do what the game, Fish and Wildlife or Fish and Game or Game Commission allows us to do with hunting regulations, with what animals can be, you know, trapped. And then some animals have to be released, other animals have to be euthanized, depending on the animal, so...
Yeah. I don't think anybody wants to see everybody killing it, but you can't let them also get hit by a vehicle and, you know, lay there on the road suffering. So there's, I mean, there's a humane part about doing this a little bit differently than maybe some people might want us to. But I think we'd have to address this issue because it's getting really out of control in the city of Pittsburgh. And I think we need to do something more. And I'm not blaming, I'm saying in general, it's just getting to be so much. But I want to thank you, Director, for the work that you do. And thank you all for the work you do. Thank you.
Great. We're also joined by Councilwoman Gross on the Zoom. Councilwoman, do you have questions for animal control?
Your, thank you, Madam Chair. I want definitely to thank Animal Control and Public Safety for the responses that they've, sorry, I think I lost you, for their responses to issues in my district. I just tuned in. I got in the Zoom a couple of minutes late, so I'm not sure if anyone spoke specifically about rats. But following up on Councilwoman Smith's questions, you know, the rat population in some cities gets to be so problematic that it's hard to kind of battle your way back. And I do not think we're there in Pittsburgh. But I do think that it's important that we watch out, stay vigilant for areas where we have rat colonies. And I say this because, as Councilwoman Smith said, it is all across the city. So I have had rat issues in my district in areas where there's small or lower value homes. And I've had rat colonies where there are larger, higher value homes. And I've had issues with rats coming out of sewers. And again, we've responded to each of these incidents. I don't want anyone to be too alarmed. But that we really need to be sure that we're allocating the resources to animal control so that they can respond, so that we don't have a situation where it becomes impossible to control, right? So, and I've also had, you know, these issues where the houses were empty. But I've also had the same issue of a rat population becoming out of control, affecting the whole street and neighbors when a house is actually inhabited. So I just wanted to ask, make sure that we hear whether or not you have the resources that you need or if there's anything that we can do better to respond more quickly or to find situations before they're reported, you know, to the city council person's office or something like that. So any suggestions are welcome.
Well, I think probably maybe a broader approach as far as making sure everybody within the city knows that we actually do have a rodent baiting program. A lot of people that we talk to at Animal Care and Control and 3-1-1 will tell you this, too, is it's like the first time they're hearing about it. So, and when we talk to them on the phone, not everybody, of course, but I have to say a good one-third, maybe to one-quarter of the people just don't know about it, and they're very surprised to hear about it. So if we could maybe get the word out a lot better that it is available, I know that would be a flood of calls. But, you know, the more calls we get, the more traps that are put out. And so the less chance of running into problems that, you know, the city does face, certainly not around this time of year, but normally around spring and summer.
Thank you. And I also want to acknowledge that you brought down the response times for rat baiting from, you know, a month to just a week or less, I think, in the last two years. So that was really, really an important shift as well because rat populations do have a phenomenally fast rate of reproduction. And so I want to acknowledge the good work of the department there. I will need to circle back because I didn't get to jump in on the PLI budget hearing. But I know that sometimes, again, sometimes these are inhabited homes, sometimes they are not, or commercial buildings. And can you answer maybe how we might do citations more effectively? Because we have, again, in the past, had situations where neighbors are calling on us to issue a citation of an address and issue at a home that was inhabited, but had to just really, when I want the public to understand, like a rat colony that was visible during the day, running around in the yards and neighbors', you know, driveways and things. And that tracked out. Like we didn't, I feel that we can do better in figuring out how we are citing these homes. And I know this is probably not your area of expertise, but I know that Director Schmidt has lived through this, that, you know, it's the International Property Maintenance Code, but then feel like didn't issue the, you know, issued a citation maybe for weeds and not for the rodents. And then it drags out, and then it goes to the magistrate. And in the meanwhile, we're baiting and trapping, but we're not calling on the property owners. The property owners aren't being, I don't think, cited effectively. And so they get to do nothing for weeks or maybe even months at a time instead of being part of the solution. Now, any response there that could be helpful, it's appreciated.
Well, like you said, it's not our area as far as issuing citations for these homes, but we certainly could work with PLI more when we find out homes of this type of nature to clue them in. That would be David Reed, clue him in. He's been very, very good at working with Animal Care and Control in the past. And see what we can do about maybe expediting the process to the best of our ability.
Okay. Well, we'll circle back on that another time. But that's all the questions. And again, I just want to also thank everybody for responding when there were issues that were just large and complex. And this wasn't this past year, but I just want to mention again, in a previous year, Animal Control and Public Safety worked with us to literally circle a quadrant in a neighborhood and put out traps at some 20 homes in kind of concentric circles because that's what it took. And it was really important that they did that work, and it really was effective. So again, just a thank you. And that's all I have, Madam Chair.
Councilwoman, did you have?
Thank you. I just, the contract for the rodent abatement, is that current? And when was it renewed? Because I think I called once before and we were waiting for it. Did you already cover this, Councilwoman Wilson? Okay, I'm sorry.
That is current. I'd have to double-check to see exactly when the, when it was renewed. But we do have a current contract with our rodent baiting.
And I just want to make sure that residents know that they have to have the approval of the neighbor next to them. Is that correct? Could you talk a little bit about the criteria? Because I don't want people thinking they're going to call and everybody's going to run out.
No, they have to own their, they have to own the property where they want the rodent bait trap put. So if they have a neighbor they feel is causing the problem, then what we ask them to do is try to encourage that neighbor to call in also, without a doubt. But if whatever's going on between them, they can't, they say they just don't want to do that, then we encourage all the neighbors around them to call in. The more people that call in around a source problem, the better off it'll be because that way more bait traps are being set. Most likely, it'll be taken back to the nest, and the nest itself will then be taken care of.
And I'm also going to say that I think PWSA needs to be a good partner in cleaning the sewers and making sure that they're helping so that, you know, so I just want to mention that, too. They should be a partner in this, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from members? No? Okay. Yes, I mean, I'll just briefly say that, you know, it's always a pleasure working with your team, Chief Madden. I mean, I call, I get responses immediately. I always appreciate that. I definitely want to highlight, as sort of the council member that kind of found myself at the center of the deer, of the deer management program somehow, I think that's a pretty significant reduction from 583 deer in 2024 to 325 this year.
So far.
So far. So that is a reduction. So I mean, we don't know for sure, but it could be perhaps, too, that we've, we're seeing less deer getting hit because we're managing the population better?
That is certainly the hope.
Okay, okay. Anyway, well, that's good because, you know, hitting a deer with your car is no fun. So the Spay and Neuter Program, so just to clarify, so it's two pets per year per household with a maximum of five over five years?
Yes.
Right? Okay, great. And then if you are doing a trap neuter, you know, a trap neuter release, if you're registered as a trapper, you get 30 traps a year?
Yes, and we're willing to, depending on, normally 30 in what's called a feral cat colony,[1707.58] That's a manageable number. We normally don't like to see them get much bigger than that. And most feral cat colony caregivers normally don't either.
Okay.
So normally if it's going to start getting bigger than that, we start talking to the trappers that maybe they could split it off and to have two different colonies.
Okay.
And then get, maybe get a second feral, feral cat colony caregiver to come in.
Okay.
That would be the better, best way to handle it.
Okay. Okay. Sounds good. I feel like I'm turning into a feral cat colony at my house, but.
All right. We'll sign you up.
I'll talk to my kid. No, please don't. Um, I keep giving cats to my neighbors. Um, I don't know. Right. Um, so I did want to ask about, um, snakes. How many snakes? So we had this giant rat snake. It was the first day of summer vacation in the front yard. I mean, I about lost my mind. We were all completely freaking out. My son was very brave and like, it was nuts. It was the biggest snake I've ever seen. So how often do you get that with animal?
We get that often, very often. As a matter of fact, we do, we deal with a lot of snakes. Of course, we group them into reptiles in general, but we get a lot of, uh, what are called native snakes to the Pittsburgh area or in Pennsylvania. Uh, normally all we end up doing is just relocating them. Most of them are found outside the home.
Okay.
Most of the residents that do see them do not like them in their yard. We'll go over and actually educate them about what type of snake it is, why it's there, uh, what, what it's seeking. Uh, we do our best to catch them and then relocate them, certainly remove them from houses or we've actually removed quite a few from apartment buildings. But, uh, for the most part, it's when people, you know, see them underneath their porch or underneath their patio. We tell them unfortunately, we can't crawl underneath there and get it. They ask sometimes for snake traps. They don't make snake traps, so we don't have anything like that. We basically tell them, you know, you can stay away from it. It'll move off on its own. Just let it be. It's not seeking you or your pets, or we don't have anything that large in the city of Pittsburgh that would be going after pet cats or dogs or anything like that. Um, but if anybody wants a snake removed, we'll come over and do it. And even though we've had numerous calls for venomous snakes within the city of Pittsburgh, we've never, we've never found one.
Okay.
There are always some other species of snake.
Okay. Sounds good. So they're generally outside, not in the house?
Most, most times, most times during the spring or summer, uh, yes, you'll, you may find an occasional snake in your house, but we'll come in and take them out of there with no problem.
Okay. Oof. I hope I never have to make that call. Okay. Um, and then I, the, the last question, oh no, not the last question. So the, another question I had was, um, what are, and you may not know, this may not be your area, but what are the rules in the city around spraying for ticks? Because I, I got a lot of calls this year just about awful tick problems.
Yeah, that's not our area. Normally that falls to the Allegheny County Health Department.
Okay.
And it may also have to include the, uh, well, not the DNR, but it might be, it might actually include Department of Natural Resources too. Those would be the first two I would actually call and contact and find out about them. They do obviously spray for mosquitoes. Be quite honest with you, I've never heard of anybody spraying for ticks. The reason being is that, uh, you know, cause as everybody's pointed out, all the different wild animals within the city, wild animals, of course, carry ticks, deer being the number one. So, uh, but there might be, there might be a precedent for it being set maybe with other cities or something like that. I've just never heard of it.
Okay. All right. Well, maybe that's something we can ask about, um, over the winter so that next summer. Yeah, I just got lots of calls this year about ticks. Um, okay. So the one thing that I, just looking at the fee schedule, so animal transport charge, I assume this is mostly dogs that we're talking about?
Yes.
Okay. So it's a hundred dollars for the first time, 150 for the second, and 200 for three or more.
Yes.
So, you know, as you know, we had, I don't know if it was, it's probably a year ago now, maybe a little longer, just an awful incident in, um, Lincoln Place with a vicious dog that did, I mean, really, I mean.
Yes, it was a very dangerous dog.
Yeah. And the damage he did, I mean, bit this woman. It was just awful. Anyway, numerous people, um, just really did a lot of damage. So, and, and that's a major frustration for me is dogs, you know, people letting, people allowing their dogs to get out, right? Um, is there any, I mean, and it is such, it's, it's a very hard process, right? To kind of get a dog. I mean, we, we walked, we talked through it, right? You know, sort of getting to the place where the courts will ultimately say, yes, this dog is vicious and dangerous and has to be put down.
Yes. Normally the way it works is the dog would have to be declared dangerous through the state, dangerous dog law, not through the city of Pittsburgh, dangerous dog law.
Right.
And then once it's declared dangerous, it would then have to violate that rule again. Normally if it's something, I can't really, you know, obviously speak for judges, but normally if the dog was running loose again, but, and this time also bit somebody else, then most judges would say that's it, you know, we've given them the chance, we, we already gave them one chance. Now it violated again. They very well may ask for that dog to be humanely euthanized. But it has to be charged to the state first and then they have to break the law again after that.
Right. So, so it is, and, 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 you know, not all cases are vicious dogs, but at the end, you, you just, you never know, right? You never know. And, um, so, so with this, these fees, I just kind of, because you do get people who just over and over and over again, their dog is out. And whether the dog is vicious or not, um, and I wish that we would, that more people would call 911 so that you all can, you know, so that Animal Control can come out and collect the dog because that's what would launch this, these fees.
Well, we understand people being neighborly and they don't want to cause problems with their neighbors, but dogs that are continuously allowed to get out will eventually start causing multiple problems. Plus we do receive calls from Humane Animal Rescue telling us, hey, this dog was just here a month ago, or this was our frequent flyer. We've actually had even from all of my officers have told me, it doesn't happen a lot, but people will say something like, well, I didn't really have anybody to take care of my dog this weekend, so I just let it go knowing you would pick it up. Take it to Humane Animal Rescue and I'll just go down on Monday and pick it back up and pay the fees. Well, if they do that two weekends in a row, you know, $50 here, $50 there, it's not that big a deal. But now if they do it, now it's a little bit more money, you know?
Right. Well, I mean.
And plus, sorry for interrupting, plus we've never raised fees before.
So, okay. So, okay. Well, that brings me to, because that's wild. Um, so this fee, so let's say that, you know, well, let's say it's the first time, like a hundred dollars. So that's what we charge. Does Humane Animal Rescue charge a daily fee as well?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Okay. So they're, okay. So it's not like an alternative to a kennel?
No, but we're willing to work with people too. I mean, if the dog, if it's a male or female dog and it's not spayed or neutered, and they're willing to get it done through the spay neuter program, then we'll work with them on the fees as far as that's going. But as you said, we want to stop people from just deciding, well, you know, the last time I went down and only cost me a hundred dollars to get my dog. So, you know, if my dog gets loose again, it's not that big a deal. Well, this time it will be, you know, because this time, each time we pick up the dog or the dog's taken to Humane Animal Rescue, it's going to cost you more and more money to get it back.
And you, and you can't get it back until you pay?
Right.
Right.
Plus you also still have to pay citations for the dog running at large.
Okay. Okay. So see, I was going to say, well, let's jack this up, but it sounds like we already have. So, uh, it'll, it'll be interesting to maybe then see next year, you know, if, if this has had any impact on the number of, of dogs that you're picking up loose. Um, yeah, I don't think, um, I don't think I have any other questions. I know a couple of years ago, you know, just for, for other members, you know, if you're having community meetings and you're looking for like a featured topic, you all came out, I think it was a couple of years ago at our annual neighborhood meetings and it was wildly popular. Just a really, yeah.
In fact, now it's more of my officers going to the meetings instead of just me. Also my assistant supervisor, uh, Tracy Gray, who was actually an Animal Care and Control Officer for 18 years. So she also goes to the community meetings. We've, we went to all but one of the City in the Streets events this year. Uh, we were at, uh, Take Your Kids to Work Day down at the City County Building. Uh, so yeah, we try to go to as many as we can that we're invited to.
Yeah. Great. Anyway, but it's, it was, it was a very popular topic when you all came, so I appreciate that. Well, I don't have any other questions. Anyone else? Thank you so much for coming and, uh, and for all your hard work and look forward to another year.
All right. Sounds good. Thank you.
Thanks. Oh, do I adjourn? No. Okay. All right. Great. So I guess now we, let's see, who's next? EMS? All right. So I'd like to invite those from the Bureau of Emergency Medical Services to join us at the table. And while you're joining, uh, Director McDevitt will give an overview of the department.
Thank you, Councilperson. The Bureau of Emergency Medical Services is dedicated to the reduction of morbidity and mortality of residents and visitors through the provisions of advanced and basic life support, pre-hospital care, medically directed rescue, and transportation of the ill and injured. The Bureau of EMS is divided into the following divisions: the ambulance division, special events, operations, rescue division, training, and operations and safety. The Bureau of EMS is also integral in, uh, part of the three joint public safety teams, where rescue, SWAT, and hazardous material team. For each team, EMS provides an administrative and leadership role as well as a cadre of other qualified personnel and instructors. Uh, in 2026, there is projection of 219 full-time employees, which includes 217 uniformed employees. That is, there is no change, um, from 2025. Uh, and also to note, EMS premium pay budget has increased by $2 million to 2026 for a total of $5.6 million. Uh, a summary of non-personnel changes, overall, there's about a $5.8 million increase in the non-personnel budget line. There's a $480,000 increase for supplies, a $2 million on, uh, increase for, uh, property for vehicles, so additional ambulances coming out of that budget. And, um, $3.4 million, uh, increase in the miscellaneous line to pay for the DHS Medicaid program. Um, in the capital budget, EMS doesn't actually have any capital projects, but we've noted this before. DPW has a facilities project for Fire Station 20, um, Medic 12 construction, um, in 2026. And for trust funds, there is the EMS reimbursable events trust fund. And there is a shortlist of fees in the fee schedule for EMS outlined there for you. That's all I have.
Great. Well, go ahead and introduce yourselves and take it away.
Hi, I'm Amara Gilchrist, the chief of EMS.
Jeff Tremmel, the deputy chief of Pittsburgh EMS.
And, uh, yet again, we have another quick little slideshow to go through, uh, highlighting some of the goals and accomplishments of the bureau. Uh, so give me just a moment to, uh, pull that up and, uh, there we go. Hopefully. There we go. And, uh, all right. Um, Director McDevitt already covered the mission statement of EMS. Uh, so, um, I'll skip to the, uh, some of the financial accomplishments and let the chiefs take it from here.
Um, so our bureau, over the last couple of years, we've had steady increases in our revenue, approximately $2 million every year. This year, we're slated to bring in an additional $4 million. Um, that's attributed to the increase in transport units that we do have and, um, just making sure that, uh, the correct paperwork is submitted whenever, uh, transports are performed. So we were able to, that's a significant improvement. Um, the next slide represents our hierarchical chart. Uh, with the addition to part-time employees, we use those for, them for special events only. Um, last year we did have the Freedom House EMT Academy added. However, we also have an advanced EMT academy now. Um, there's also two additional, um, BLS, which are the EMT units that were also added because our increase in staffing. All right. Uh, this just depicts our roster of budgeted numbers, positions that we have field. As you can see, we still do have a paramedic vacancy, however, that was significantly offset with the amount of EMTs and advanced EMTs that we have. And later in the slides, I guess we will get to the combo units and how that has made a difference in staffing. We had, we, uh, in the CBA, we are allowed to have 20 part-time, uh, employees. That could be a mix of EMTs and paramedics. We actually, uh, pushed that initiative earlier in the year and got an overwhelming response of 109 applicants. So currently we actually have 16 part-time paramedics. We had four part-time EMTs, but we lost one. So we actually have 19 in total. So we are only vacant one part-time special event personnel. The next slide depicts our bureau's accomplishment, accomplishments for this year. We've had three Freedom House classes in total, all at 100% success rate. We've also opened up our advanced EMT academy, also at 100% success rate. And everyone hears about paramedics and EMTs, however, I want to just, uh, explain what an advanced EMT is. An advanced EMT is the position that's mid-level between an EMT and a paramedic. So they aren't as skilled as paramedics, but they are allowed to do medical interventions that EMTs are not allowed to do. So that's a first in the history of our bureau because we've never had advanced EMTs. And the next line is just a breakdown of how many people had applied for, uh, part-time positions. We actually, uh, 109, but it was 47 paramedics and 62 EMTs. The next slide is just our continued advances in hiring. And you can see how that's risen, uh, over the last couple of years. Um, also with the influx of EMTs, we actually have 13 EMTs that are currently in paramedic school. I think that's huge because with the, um, implementation of combo units, the EMTs are really starting to see what the paramedics do and they know that, uh, that is a career opportunity. And a lot of them, uh, that was definitely an unintended consequence, but it's actually a good problem to have. So we actually hired 41 people so far this year. That's not including the 20 part-time personnel that were actually hired. Um, the next slide, it are, it depicts the forces. Over the last few years, um, we, we, we've heard from, um, the membership about the forcing, the force overtime, the fatigue, the drain that it takes on their families and on our personnel. And in the second quarter of this year, uh, you can actually see from the last two years that the forces are down to 386, um, forces. But the significant, more significant number is depicted on the next slide because it, that gives a more accurate representation of actually what we're seeing now that, um, our staffing has increased. The combo units are in, um, we have part-time personnel working special events. So in 2023, you can see there were 710 forces at that time and we are actually down to 179, which actually it's 159 because 20 of those were from late calls, et cetera. Uh, the next slide is the changes in mutual aid. We used to frequently have units going out of service and constantly relied on mutual aid, uh, just to get residents treatment and transport, uh, treatment and transportation to the hospitals. As you can see, um, that has significantly declined as well. The big thing, uh, is our ALS units do not go out of service. Um, we had taken the unprecedented step when our crews were getting very, um, beat up from the amount of calls and the fact that our staffing was so bad that we had taken an ALS unit out to try to condense the manpower. So it would have less of a, an impact on the personnel. We don't have to do that at all anymore. All of our ALS units stay in service around the clock. Um, part, part of that is because of the increased staffing. Also, part of it is because now we have combo units, um, which is huge. And that combo unit is just a paramedic can work with an EMT. So we're able to, um, expand our capabilities. This slide might be a little bit tricky to read, however, the red are the, is, are the goals that were achieved. Um, in the black, you can see what the issues were. Um, turnover rate was an issue. Well, this, uh, year we only had one paramedic. I think maybe now we have two, um, that resigned in 2025. However, five requested reinstatement and have been reinstated. Um, the restructuring plan, that's already been implemented. We have a robust EMT contingent. Combo units are implemented and part-time employees have made a huge impact on the special events. And then the last one, we wanted to start an advanced EMT academy and that was executed successfully. The next few slides are all of our clinical accomplishments that have occurred over the last year, year and a half, um, to include the fact that now we give pre-hospital care blood products in the field. That is, um, saving lives, um, 100% success rate on rescue, um, operations. Uh, just also other things that we do with infant safe sleep, excuse me, and hepatitis B vaccinations and drug issues in the community. and hepatitis B vaccinations and drug issues in the community. This next thing, uh next slide that um I'm gonna have the deputy talk about with Sam Sora. I don't know if anyone had saw in the news that um we were praised for 100% uh success survival rate for rescue operations. However, our response times had declined a little bit. Um and that's due in part with the fact that we did not have GPS for many years. And we do now, and the deputy can explain um this new tool that we have.
Um Sam Sora, I would imagine you are familiar with DPW has been using it for the past few years. Um we jumped on board with them, um but it's a GPS tracking device. Um with this, with the Sam Sora, it also has cameras in the cab that faces forward and outward. Sorry, this is all precaution, but I am sick. Um the idea is to uh have the crew safely go to scenes, um following all city policies, state, local laws and so forth. Unfortunately, this has uh led to some non-disciplinary issues as well as disciplinary issues for uh some response times and violation of city and state policies. Um but overall, the the goal was ultimately for the uh the safety of the crews and be able to locate them when needed.
Um and then the last slide uh is just depicting some of the goals that we have for 2026. Um ideally, I really would like to open up a paramedic academy. I feel like the success that we've had with the EMT academies and the advanced EMT academies, um that this is definitely a doable thing. Um I know I have lofty, ambitious goals, but I think that we've proven that, you know, we can execute that successfully. Um also, uh I mean, there are some things, of course, that we, you know, wish list that we did not get um in the budget. And of course, the ultimate is to stabilize the fleet and that's all I have.
Okay, and then just to uh, thank you chiefs, and then to um uh sort of wrap up this portion, uh again, we have the uh anticipated budget presented here for reference. And a brief summary is already mentioned by Director McDevitt. We have some increases in operational supplies, uh there there's an increase uh um for the Medicaid program. We have, we've contracted that with, or we are just about to um execute the contract with the Department of Human Services um as authorized by council, and we're hoping to turn some of that money around uh to help alleviate some other uh issues we have. Uh such as um providing some dedicated vehicle funding. And um that's it. And thank you for your time.
Great, thank you. Um I'll open it up to members, Councilman Wilson.
Thank you, Chair. Thanks for being here. Good to see you all. Initially, I think the um when the budget came out, there was a claim that uh some some positions weren't being accounted for in the budget. And then when I asked, I can't remember who I asked, but um anyway, maybe I asked you. Yeah, and the the answer was that they're being funded out of a trust fund? I know it's a vague question, but is there a trust fund that we?
Are you referring to our part-time?
Possibly, yeah. Is there any any trust fund that we pay for, you know, hourly wages?
So um we got a contract uh to have part-time personnel. Part-time personnel are not funded in our operating budget. So I I you should probably recall, or you probably still do get them, where we have to reimburse personnel um that come in from other services to help backfill some of the positions that are vacant. So now, we actually have hired City of Pittsburgh residents as part-time employees and they are paid through that um trust fund, the special event trust fund when they when they work.
Special event trust fund?
Yes, yeah.
The actual title, sorry, um because we've always referred to it as that, but the actual title is the EMS reimbursable events trust fund.
Thank you.
Parks and Rec also has a special events trust fund that I don't want everybody to get confused with.
What's it called?
The EMS reimbursable events trust fund, and it's exactly how Chief Gilchrist um.
And the part-time people pay out of it?
Yeah.
For the, okay, how many?
Because it's not in the general fund.
Okay. How many do we pay?
Um we're a contractor for 20. We have a staff of 19.
Okay. I did have some questions about part-time pay and part-timers. So the city had hired, like you said, the was it 19 this past year?
Yes.
Okay. And then are they allowed to, like, are they only working special events?
Yes.
Okay. Any reason why they can't work in other shifts?
They were not in, they're not in our operating budget.
So since they're being paid out of the trust fund?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we would have to allocate for them in the general fund budget in order for them to work the the trucks.
Uh any reason why we just don't? Because I see that there's a lot of premium pay, I just didn't know why we couldn't relieve some of the shifts?
I really can't answer that question. Um they're not in our um operating budget for us to pay them like that. However, they do have a significant impact on overtime because previously um paramedics would actually have to, you know, they would get forced to work special events. Or, you know, a unit, uh we used to actually have in a contract where special events took precedence over field overtime. That has changed. So the part-timers are actually backfilling all of those special event positions that our paramedics would actually have to work or that we would have to hire outside entities to work, if that makes sense.
No, I understand, so it's, but it really just comes down to, since they're being paid out of that bucket, we can't use them in in regular shifts?
Right, that trust, sorry, that trust fund is basically when um special and secondary employment is used for EMS that when we receive funding, whenever whenever um vendors pay us, that goes into that bucket and then it just kind of, it's just a circle of of funds that's separate from the operating budget. And it's only designated for um reimbursable events, so. Um because that trust fund is only used for re for material supplies, personnel that are dedicated for some uh secondary employment and reimbursable events that anybody that is paid out of that or is out then also can only use for special events.
Okay. If we did include uh, you know, a line item in the in the regular budget?
There are, there are a lot of things that I put in for that were not approved, so.
Yeah, how does that work? So so you see you did put in, this is one of them, maybe you put in to try and get, like, how does that work? That just similar to council offices of every department, you're sending it over to OMB? And then i- is there a back and forth?
I send all of our requests to the Public Safety Director's office.
Yeah, so we have each bureau office group within Public Safety sends um their requests up through my office.
Yeah.
Um I work with budget on a general amount of requests that I can make, right?
Yeah.
And kind of on the idea of what the percentage of increase to my budget would be or not. And then we work with the bureaus. As those requests come through, they get prioritized, um things that we have to do, et cetera. Um we then present that to OMB and OMB makes the final decisions. And then after the preliminary budget is issued, then my teams also go through it and we kind of try to negotiate things similar to uh on Tuesday, we talked about the social workers, you know. Originally, they were cut down to six and then I advocated and worked some other things to put them back up to 12. Um there's was things in the EMS budget originally, the overtime budget was at, I think, 2 million less than it is now. Um we worked through some stuff after we looked at the Medicaid increases to add that money into the budget. Um so those, i- it's all, I mean, you guys know better than anybody, you manage all the money. There's a, there's a limited amount of dollars in this city and we all have to figure out how to use them and and anticipate.
Do you, yeah, do you think that, okay, so the request was sent over and then did you agree and then send that over to OMB or did?
Yeah, so I send it to OMB and then each group meets with OMB.
Okay.
Like Chief Gilchrist and Chief Tremel, myself and Charles met with OMB.
Yeah.
Advocated for the requests. We do that with each of the bureaus and then it's the final number.
And just the line item for part-time wasn't put in, like, okay.
Yeah, a- and I think we would have, there's a few things, right? We have to hire the part-timers, get them onboarded. Um I think the the route that the chief is taking is the most sensible one to get them first with special events, see how well that works.
Um but what do they do if there's not a special event that week?
I mean, many of them have other jobs. This is just a part-time, you know, they work whatever to, you know, and some, that's part of it too, like asking folks to work a part-time job, working a few hours at a special event is different than asking them to do a part-time 12-hour shift. Um, you know, I, I think that's something we can look to expand future, but we would have to do some projections as to what that would truly save us on overtime, right? Because we'd have to get that money from somewhere. Um our overtime budget als- already is probably a little lower than it needs to be, but um.
Yeah, why would it be lower? Like, when I'm looking at this, it says, you know, in 20, I have, the only thing I have in front of me is, um, which is good. So I'm not trying to critical what I have in front of me, but I have 7,200, I'm sorry, 7.2 million, almost 7.3 spent in 2024. So just going off of that, we're already close to 2 million. Like, what's projected for 2026? Uh but.
Yeah, it's, I mentioned Tuesday, I'm having all of my teams do projections for you guys um to what we think it would be. Um OMB makes their own projections that I, we don't necessarily uh
Yeah.
Calculate.
Good way to put it.
Currently.
Uh the most recent report I have is that premium pay line was sitting at 7.2 million spent for 2025, yes.
So for so for um a month and a half to go, we've already met the the 2024 actual.
Yes.
And then have, has there been anything done uh in this budget, in this proposed 2026 budget in terms of personnel or part-time or, you know, just all these different options to reduce um premium pay? So that it would actually reflect reflect the 5.6 projected for 2026? Was there anything done to?
Well, there there are contractual limitations that we have. Um I I explained the combo units, however, um the contractual limitation that we have is that we cannot create combo units until all of the paramedics have picked their overtime. At that point, then we can make combo units.
Yeah, could you explain the combo unit scenario again?
A combo unit is a paramedic who is um higher skilled and an EMT working together. That is the national model. Pittsburgh, since its inception, has not done that. Um it's typically been two paramedics and two EMTs. That's how we used to run trucks. But knowing that there is a staffing shortage nationwide in pre-hospital care, that's something that we fought to have in the contract, knowing that it would help um personnel, knowing that it would hu- help the workload, knowing that it would help keep units in service. So there uh, we are limited to the amount of combo units that we can have on any given shift. It's four. Um but those combo units are not placed in service until all of the overtime is covered.
So the combo unit, so for, okay, let me just just get this understood. So typically, we have two paramedics in a, in an ambulance.
Yes.
And then this puts a paramedic with an EMT.
That's what a combo unit is, yes.
And how does that play out in the field? Is there a better? So I'm sorry, what's the reason we're doing that? To to reduce the amount of overtime pay?
Well, one is to reduce the strain on the personnel, two is to keep units in service. Three, it's something that pretty much every service does. Pittsburgh just has not done that until now.
So but does that reduce premium pay?
It has reduced premium pay. You may not see the realization right now. It's just because this is something that is really evolving.
Because one of them is paid less per hour.
That doesn't factor into it. What it is, is that if you look on like the forced overtime, there's not that amount of forced overtime. Um that EMT would be working anyway. They would just either be working on an EMT truck or, you know, a paramedic would still be working on a paramedic truck. So it, I hope that answers your question. So they're not called in from home to make combo units. It's like, we run 13 ALS units a day. And now we have four to five EMT units a day. So that's 18 units that we have running daily. Um if there's overtime on the paramedic unit, after all of the overtime is filled and in order to not force personnel to have to be mandated to work an additional six hours, an EMT is taken off an EMT truck and put on a paramedic truck.
And and how is uh like the, is there any difference in patient care whenever you're doing these combo units versus a regular two paramedic?
I do not believe that there is a difference in difference in patient care. Um the fact of the matter is, is that there's protocols that the paramedics and EMTs have to follow. Um if it's in an ALS call, which is an advanced life support call, that paramedic has to take that call. He um, they're not allowed to downgrade it to give it to an EMT. Likewise, if it's a very minor injury, um then the EMT takes that call, so.
Okay, so it's it's just dispatched differently?
It's it's dispatched the same. It just depends on when uh the crew gets there. They have to determine the severity of the patient.
Okay. Thank you. And then with the, with the fleet? I I feel like you knew what I was gonna say before I said it. Uh just want to get your, your understanding of where we are uh with the fleet. I know that we've all, you know, heard, or we're all aware of the the challenges that the fleet is experiencing. Not in, you know, not entirely everyone's or anyone's, one person's fault here or people that are on council now or the mayor now, but, you know, it's just an ongoing struggle and there's a lot of uh attention to it. Um I know that this council's been a part of putting together like the annual report that we get before, you know, the um any report before the the budget is proposed. The controller just came out with a with an audit. There's been ongoing, you know, uh questions about the facilities doing maintenance and the contracts and, you know, how much, how much we're setting out that we can't do, you know, in the strip district, at the Transdev, I want to say first vehicle Transdev. So can we talk about that for a second? How is, how does it look to you all? Because to us, it looks like we need to really figure something out this year, like we can't just pass the buck for another year.
So I will say, and as I said last year and the year before that, the fleet is in dire condition. Um there are a couple of slides that were left out because they're going to be presented later. But I would like the deputy to just show you a slide that is a visual representation of just how bad the fleet really is. Everything in red is well past its life cycle. And I'm talking about 10 years, seven years, eight years. That's two pages. Um that's our fleet. So when I tell you it's dire, it's dire. It's not sugarcoating it. Um Transdev, um they do the absolute best that they can with what they have to work with. It just is, right now, that's, that that is just the state of the fleet.
Help me understand, because even in a a store, like, help me understand the. Like what that means, uh, on the ground for the employees, because. You know, even in a news article that tried to understand what really happened on a call where ambulance had to swap out. And was mentioned that, um. Like one of them was already carrying like fluid for the car. I'm sorry, for the rig or whatever you all call it, the ambulance. Uh, you know, I'm trying to be cool, say rig, so. Uh, but you know, I'm just trying to understand what, what's going on, on a daily basis for. The employees that are. Inside the ambulance. Like what are, are they actually carrying? Some of these materials to, or some of these like items that would like help the. Little engine that could chuck along, like what's?
No, they're not supposed to. I think the call that you're referring to, there was, uh. An issue and the rescue truck actually had fluid in their truck and was able to put it in the ambulance. I think you're referring to that call. I'm not exactly sure, I'm not a mechanic, but I'll let the deputy actually talk to you about. That, I mean, it, it is disheartening and it, it does. You know, tank morale to have the equipment that we have or don't have. For crews to be able to effectively treat and tra- transport people, I'll say that. So.
We do need an entire new fleet. Um, there's no doubt about that. The call that I think is referring to, I believe they put antifreeze in one of the, um, medic units that was low. Um, but the medic units are not supposed to have any fluids. If there's any warning issues, um, the lights that come on. They are to immediately call a district chief and make arrangements, whether it needs a tow or go to the garage or switch.
So to your recollection, we don't have. Like that was just a one off situation where they're carrying antifreeze?
Um, as far as I know, yes, cause they're not supposed to carry any fluids on their vehicles to replenish them themselves. The only thing they could do is if they go to the garage, they can put windshield washer fluid in, you know, if it's low by the pumps. They're not supposed to be dumping transmission fluid, regular oil or antifreeze in their vehicles.
Okay, well, that's good to know. Um, it's not, that's just a one off. You know, it's good to hear it here because, you know, I think. You know, I think when that article came out, everyone was like, oh yeah, no big deal. They just. Fluid, like, I mean, if I had to carry antifreeze fluid, um, you know, for my car. I'd be like, you know, I don't, that's not a scenario I wanna be in. Uh, maybe when I first, had my first car, that was a scenario, but not for a, a decorated, uh, bureau like yourself, so. Really wanna get somewhere with, with the, with the fleet, especially for EMS this year, was that?
Um, I was just gonna add a little bit more to it. So there is, um. With the premium, or sorry, with the increase in Medicaid program, there is a plan to put one point nine, eight million of that money. Will get transferred to E L A for EMS fleet specifically. Um, and then.
Yeah, how many are supposed to be bought this year?
Three A L S ambulances total and two B L S basic life support, uh, ambulances and additional pickup truck for EMS.
And how much would we need to buy if?
If, if, if I was the, and I know.
How much should we buy?
Twenty one.
Yeah, that red, right? Everything on that red.
Those are the primary units.
How many red are there?
We would truly need around twenty one medic units. Now we have three remounts that we're still waiting for from twenty twenty three. One's supposed to be in December, two other ones are supposed to be in, um, February. And the three trucks that will not forbid the, the award was to wield coach, um. If everything moves along as far as paperwork wise, contract wise, um, three of those units will be done in, uh, December of twenty twenty six. So that would knock the twenty one down to, we'd only need fifteen more. Um, if you were truly to do the math and take the ones out per the schedule.
But just.
And I just wanna say for the record, I, you know, let's say we go on the route of getting a lot of new vehicles. We, we have got to get somewhere with, um. Uh, paperwork and I don't blame the chief for that, actually. I wanna make sure that we have someone. That's dedicated to doing that. I don't really wanna. You know, when I'm hearing that things aren't done, I don't wanna. I don't wanna see the chief on, on the news all the time, cause I actually don't. I think there's a lot of people behind the scenes here that are dropping the ball and they're not the ones standing in front of the camera. So I wanna, in the future, I wanna get somewhere where. People behind the scenes, uh, so I wanna, I wanna follow up on that conversation that we were talking about. So that, uh, you know, in the new year, that we have someone that is, uh, continually making sure. That we're not in that situation again with when we have the money, we order it, it's not an issue.
I, I appreciate that. I, I will just say that I hold all of my staff accountable. And ultimately, when something goes wrong in the bureau, it's on me. So, but I, the, I do rely on the folks that are in the positions that they're in. To do the jobs that they're tasked to do. So at the end of the day, the buck does stop with me. However, um, issues and deficiencies. Um, where, uh, folks are not performing adequately, those are definitely handled.
Alright, thanks. I did have a couple more questions. Um, I can wait to come back if I'm boring anyone. Good?
You're still talking, you're boring me. No, you're good.
Uh, I, I did have a note here about the, the crew chief wages aren't listed in the wage section.
They, they actually are. Um, they're up above. Um, uh, they're not listed at the bottom. They're actually. In the top in a grouping. Um, here, I'll show you.
Yeah, their, the crew chief is, is listed here.
And what's the rate?
Uh, for twenty twenty six, uh, forty three dollars fifty seven cents an hour.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's up at the top. It's, it's not at the bottom.
Okay. Alright, and then I had another note here about the, um. The reduction in, in, uh, workers' compensation costs, which actually all across the board. That was a big win, uh, for this administration and I'm not sure if it was for EMS, but. I know D P W, the, the, the compensation cost did go down in previous years. Uh, due to several factors, but for this, this one, I was just wondering, um, you know, why there would be that reduction. Uh, especially in. The, uh, looks like workers' compensation is reduced by forty six percent. Specifically medical workers.
That's all done with H R and O M B. We don't really.
What's an H R question?
Well, H R, O M B are the ones that handle all the workers' comp across the city.
Why would someone be compensated for medical workers' compensation? Like what's the reason?
Workers' comp?
Yeah, I mean, it's just.
I mean, if, if a medic gets injured, yeah, they're gonna, as far as a decrease, you know, uh.
So was there anything done in this past?
In the past couple of years?
In the past year to know that we would, you know, I don't know, is there any sort of training to know that we have a reduction of almost fifty percent?
The, I, I can't, I can't say that there has been a reduction or an increase in injuries. The only thing that I can say is just with a lot of the newer equipment that we have, like the power stretchers and. We got new stair chairs this year. Things like that help, you know, contain, prevent injuries. But I don't have any evidence on a reduction or an increase of injuries.
I don't have them here, but you can, actually anybody, any city employee can see them. They're in the portal. They, we have a dashboard that shows. Uh, injuries, workplace injuries across all departments, not all departments, but, uh, D P W, police, fire and EMS. There has been a decrease. I can't bring them up.
So that's not something you send over to the, you know, just like, um. Uh, premium pay estimates, like you're saying, what was the, I can't remember which one was, the question it was. I think it was the first question. That I was asking, where you send over? What you're looking for and then?
No, not for workers' comp, because we don't really handle, other than knowing we have an employee on workers' comp, we don't know. Necessarily how much their costs are anything. Privacy reasons, we don't get those medical records, that's all.
I gotcha.
Through H R. Um, so they get those anticipated.
Alright, thanks. Yeah, some of these questions are just really trying to get to the heart of what the real number is. So that we can. Make some, some critical decisions here. Alright, thanks.
Great, thank you, Councilwoman.
Yeah, thank you. Actually, I'm glad you asked those questions, cause that's, uh, the. Basically, what you just said at the end is what I want to, I wanna know what number we're, real number, we're really short. And where we can find those dollars and, cause, I mean, I feel bad even wasting everyone's time here at these budget hearings, because I feel like. We all know this is not a real budget. I mean, we need to go back and do some things. But you mentioned O M B and I would just wanna tell you, I think part of what's, the problem is, is that we have an O M B. We never used to. Under Luke Ravenstone, it was his office that did the budget. And they met with council members and directors would come see council members for what they wanted in the budget. And council would go to, to go to the mayor's office and say, this is what we want. And they would make sure they incorporated some of that into the budget. And if they didn't, they didn't get their budget passed. So I, I just wanna say, I think it was when council controlled what they should be, what they were elected to do, the. The, the dollars for the city of Pittsburgh. I actually think we should do away with O M B, to be honest with you. Because it's been an issue for all of us ever since it's been created. Um, and part of it is, is that our departments are, are struggling, they're not getting what you want. We're handing money out, grant money, hand over fist. I mean, tons of money and we're talking about raising taxes for people and not providing the things that they need. So I kinda feel like these budget hearings are kind of like. Maybe we shouldn't be wasting your time doing this. I think we should be talking about what the real number is that we're short. I think we should have, be having a conversation with the mayor's office, not with the media. Everybody's talking through the media instead of talking to one another. And we, we saw how that worked for the, you know, federal government and for the state, and I think we should be, have learned from those examples and do a lot better. Um, so with that said, I just wanna say, um, thank you for the work that you do. I'm going to, um, have, continue those conversations and I'm probably gonna put some legislation into do away with O M B. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Uh, is Council President still on? Yeah, Council President, do you have any questions? For, um, EMS?
Thank you. Not, not so much a question, but just to follow up on Councilman Wilson's sort of line of questioning. I do think it'd be worthwhile. Exploring if we put. Part time employees into our general fund. What the effect that would have on the premium pay. Um, and so it's not really as much of a question as much as I think us in the budget office should probably go through that exercise. Um, to see what that it would actually have, so that we're not simply paying them just for special events, but rather actually doing work. Um, so that's, it's more of a comment, less of a question. You can respond if you would like to. But I would also ask Chief Gilchrist, if she was, if she's willing to send over to council the full list. That she submitted, um, at the beginning of this process that, where her budget requests were, so we can actually see the full list.
Yep, absolutely.
And we can even, we can send that for all, the entire department if you'd like, Councilman.
Yes, I would actually. Thank you. That was it.
Okay, thank you. Um, yeah, so, um, thank you, yeah, um, really, really great work this year and over the past two years with, you know. Just great numbers in this presentation. I won't go back. So I, I'm sorry to do this, but just could. Could you explain to me one more time, just so I'm clear? So. Before we had the combo units, you would have one, one type of truck is two paramedics. One type of truck was two E M Ts. They respond to different, they just, and, and depending on the severity of the call. Either one is sent or the other.
Correct.
Right? So if it's a, if it's a life, you know. A dire life, a murder, like a heart attack or something, I'm guessing, then the, the paramedic team would go.
Correct.
But now we do it where it's a combo unit, which the combo unit then can go to any type of call.
Correct.
Correct, okay. So can you explain to me again, just so I, I, what, what does it mean? That the, that the combo unit starts once the paramedics have, what does that mean to pick overtime?
So let's, let's say on any given shift, there's ten spots of overtime.
Okay.
Okay, so the paramedics pick all of the overtime that they want. Anything that's left over before someone is mandated to work, a combo unit is created.
Okay, so, so like, so it's just like hypothetically, we're, we're short ten paramedics, then you put out the call, does anyone wanna work? The overtime. And then you see, so let's say. Whatever, two people say, yeah, I wanna do overtime. So then you have, so, so that, that fills up two. Paramedic trucks, but then how do you do the combo? So, so then what, so then everybody becomes a combo unit for the remain, or for the remaining eight?
No, in the contract, we were, we are only allowed to have four combo units a shift. If that makes sense. So out of the eighteen, um, trucks that we run, let's just focus on the thirteen paramedic trucks.
Okay.
We can only have four combo units per the C B A.
Uh, okay.
So. Of course, what, what helped tremendously cutting the premium budget is if combo units can be. Formed before the overtime is awarded.
Or if combo units were just the standard?
That too, but, um, that's not something that's in the C B A.
Okay, okay. Alright, I just wanted to understand. Um. Okay, uh, so the other thing, let's see. But nonetheless, there's been a significant reduction, a seventy eight percent reduction in the forced overtime.
Correct.
And the forced overtime, that was both pair, was that both paramedics and E M Ts doing forced overtime?
Primarily paramedics.
Primarily paramedics, okay. And that was before we had the combo unit in place, the combo unit program?
The combo units, yes. I, I'm, a lot of the paramedics just take the overtime now.
Okay.
So, but the ones that do not wanna stay do not have to stay because of the combo units.
Oh, okay, okay, I'm tracking. But, but, but generally. I mean, generally, is the overtime welcome or not? I mean, I don't know. I don't know what if, I mean, I don't know what.
They're taking overtime.
So overtime is welcome. I got it, I got it. Okay. Um, okay, um, just as with regard to, so, okay, and I wanted to know what is, what would be the cost? So we have the E M T academy. That seems to be going very well. Um, getting lots of new hiring through that. We've created an advanced E M T academy. Is there a reason that we're not just, that it's not just one academy, like just advanced E M T, that we're doing like a middle one?
Yeah, so an E M T academy is twelve weeks. The advanced E M T academy, because you already have to be an E M T. Is an additional ten weeks. Um, you can't combine them, cause they're learning different curriculum. Does that? So, cause it's, it's the midway between a paramedic and an E M T. Some people don't wanna be advanced E M Ts as, as well. Some people don't wanna be paramedics. So it's that middle, it's, it's some upward mobility. So they're not just stuck at a E M T rate. For however long, you know, there's some upward mobility. Or a lot of our E M Ts. Had no experience when they started. So, um, they, they wanna work for a little bit as an E M T. They may not quite be ready to go to paramedic school. Or dedicate that amount of time, so they'll go to our advanced E M T academy. But we've only been able to put on one so far, cause of budgetary reasons.
And are the, were the advanced E M T academy participants, folks who did the E M T academy and just kept going? Or were they just other, just E M Ts who?
So there, um, are, everything we, we've done has been internal, so. The model that we use that has been largely successful is. Like we overstaffed with E M Ts with the purpose of being able to take that contingent of overstaffing. And just put them right in E M, uh, advanced E M T school. So they are not working on the trucks while they're in advanced E M T school. The only thing they're supposed to do is go to school. That's the exact same model I wanna use for a paramedic school. Because it is extremely difficult to work the amount of hours and the shift work and actually have time to study and attend classes. So that's the reason we've seen the success that we have. We set them up for success, not for failure.
Got it. Oh, okay, so that, and, and just one bit, so is the advanced E M, is that like a, is that a nationwide thing? Is that like a state or federal standard? Like E M T, advanced E M T.
Yeah, so last year, I, I think I ran a number, there were only fifty five advanced E M Ts in, um. in, um, Allegheny County. So it's like we contributed to that number.
Okay, okay.
By, you know, by seven, um, so, but, uh, I think to answer the other part of your question, our advanced E M Ts are, um, trained, they're, they're already E M Ts. And it's, it goes by, if they have any discipline, um, how they score on a test. So it's almost like an award for them to be accepted into the advanced E M T Academy. So that's how we actually pick the, the personnel to be in it.
Okay, I mean, and it, it seems like, um, from a, from a level of service perspective and just like a workforce development, like in, in a perfect world, we just have all paramedics ultimately, right? Like it would just, everybody would just come in and like get up to that paramedic and then we just have a, a, you know, all paramedics. Okay, well, that's interesting. I like, that, that, that's, that seems like a, like a smart approach, sort of, you know, like has, with these, like, these staggered academies. So how much then would it cost? And I recognize the advanced E M T Academy is new, so you, you're, you're on your first class now.
No, they already graduated.
Oh, okay, but it's.
Yeah, they're out in the field, but we only had one class.
So does that one, does that academy still kind of feel like a, it's in, I'll say like the pilot phase?
No.
Or you feel like that academy is, is up and going? So is it just a question of needing budget to keep that one going?
To keep a continuous classes, yes.
And is there a budget to keep the continuous classes on the regular E M T Academy?
Um, I put in, I submitted a request for next year. Um, right now, we are overstaffed with E M Ts.
Oh, I see, so we don't actually need to do at the moment, so, so.
No.
So is there a budget for, to, to continue with the advanced E M T Academy?
No.
No, so there's no academy budget then?
Not right now, there's not, no.
Well, that seems, do you have something to say?
Well, what I was going to say is we have, it, it's not just the academy budget, we have to have the staffing budget, right? So.
Right.
We can't add more E M Ts without adding more E M Ts to the budget, which would then cover for the, and E M Ts that go through the advanced E M T program. And then also.
I'm trying, so we're like just at capacity. We're just at capacity on the E M Ts and so there's no, there's no wiggle room on, on staff to kind of get?
Right, like we're, we're now kind of backed up to the point that we, we need to increase our paramedic numbers so then we can put more folks through paramedic, through paramedic school, and then advanced E M T, and then E M T. Like, there, there is a pipeline there that the chief has created, but it's currently backlog because of, of staffing numbers.
And would the pipeline be relieved if we created the paramedic academy?
So, uh, right now, um, we have a record number of E M Ts right now in paramedic school. We have 13 E M Ts in paramedic school.
Oh, like in, like in a pay, sorry, like in a paid third-party?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, of course, we would like to do that internally. Um, hopefully, they're all successful, but it is very difficult to hold down a full-time job and go to school, um, at the same time. So, um, I, I hope that they are all successful. Um, we do not need any more paramedics in the budget. We do not. Um, we need to come up to staffing to fill the vacancies that we have. However.
That's what, because we're 15 paramedics short.
We may be a little bit more.
Vacancies, I mean.
Yes.
Okay.
So, but by and large, there are more B L S calls than there are A L S calls.
Okay.
So when I was restructuring the bureau, we ran the data as far as the amount of A L S calls versus B L S calls. And there's more B L S calls, so it made sense to create more E M T units, to take the paramedics away from the calls that bogged them down and saved them for the more serious calls. So that is the reason why all of this stuff was implemented the way that it was.
Okay.
The good thing was, is that we were able to put on the E M T academies and advanced E M T academies because of the shortfall with, you know, our medics. So in turn, taking the stress and the extra work off of them. So we did use our budget creatively, so.
Um, and then just, this is, and I know we have our, our union reps here as well, but what has the feedback been from the staff on all, on, on just overall?
As far as the combo units, as far as the overtime?
Just in, you will, I mean, it's, I'm, I'm almost confusing myself because it sounds, this is like a very complicated sort of game of Jenga with the, the, you know, but, um, just sort of overall, like, has it been a positive? I mean, have, are people, do people feel happier as staff? I know that there was lots of forced overtime before. I definitely heard about that, you know, a year or two ago, um, from a few folks just kind of out in the community.
So I will say, um, progress is change. And change is uncomfortable, and change has been uncomfortable in the bureau, however it was necessary. Um, we've had paramedics that didn't necessarily want to work with E M Ts because it's something they hadn't done before. However, um, as I mentioned before, that's pretty much how all EMS services operate. Um, it's more efficient. Um, I don't know if it's necessarily more effective, but there is a nationwide shortage of personnel.
Got it.
Um, our folks could not bear getting beat up the, the way they were getting beat up by, you know, all of the overtime that they were being forced to work. Um, it is funny that now, you know, I see people who I've never seen work before coming to work and they're like, oh my goodness, there's no, there are just no overtime. So it, it's funny that the premium budget reflects that we're so over because there are people complaining that they're not getting overtime. There are people that are extremely happy that they haven't gotten forced. Uh, we had a meeting with the union yesterday, and I believe the vice president said he hadn't even been forced yet. So that's huge because, you, you know, people can now actually now go home to their families.
Yeah, I mean, that was the feedback I got. Again, this was just sort of anecdotal a, a couple of years ago, just out, again, out in the.
Yeah.
It was like, I, you know, right.
It definitely is, is.
You know, parents and.
We're definitely not hearing what we did before, like just the, just the desperate cries of, I just want to go home, you know, not hearing that.
So in terms of a, just so I'm clear, so, and now I'll stop asking about the academy, I'm confusing myself, but as far as budget that you asked for and didn't, or as, as far as what you got in the budget, do you have what you need for the academy needs right now? You don't?
No.
So how much do you need to do whichever level, whether E M T Academy, paramedic, middle, you know, the, the, um, advanced E M T?
I believe when we ran the numbers, when we were thinking about a paramedic academy, it was like $68,000.
$68,000? Per person?
No, 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 I'm sorry. Overall, to put on a class of like eight.
Okay, and, oh, okay, all right, so 68 per class, but, and then how many would you do per year?
We would like to do two to three.
Okay, so just to.
But even.
Round up, just be like 210,000?
Yeah, that would be the wish. I mean, but even if we had one class per year, that would be sufficient because that garners you eight to 10 paramedics.
Okay. Okay, so I, you know, again, I know that there, there, there's going to be lots of wrangling among council members and change is coming, right? And I know some of us are like, you know, bring in more revenue. I assume it's going to, I'm hoping it's going to be a combination, right? Uh, but what I will say, and I know that it's, everyone's going to roll their eyes at me, but there's, out in the ether, there's been sort of, sort of chatter about, ooh, well, maybe U P M C could just buy, buy us some ambulances, right? And I just want to say for the record, that if U P M C or A H N would be so kind, right? That, um, it's not five ambulances, right? It's 21 ambulances. And that is roughly 10.5 million dollars, which seems to me would be a very reasonable thing for U P M C to do right now at this time, even before we pass this budget, right? Is to get out their checkbook and write us a check because that is totally within their means. It is a hundred, you know, the, the, these are transports that are going to their hospitals, right? Also A H N, you know? Um, and then if you want to throw another 250,000 in there for these academies, that seems, that, that would be, that would be very nice. So I, I know that I, we, I, I feel like as council, as a city, we would all be greatly appreciative of that, since it seems to be, but, but what, what I am a little concerned about is I don't, I, I'm a little concerned about, you know, an incoming offer of like four ambulances and people, you know, trying to do a celebration about that. We need 21 ambulances for about 10.5 million dollars. And another 210,000 to keep our academies going so we can keep folks staffed. Because I think the academy is really great, we've got it for all the other, you know, for, for fire and police, and, and it's something that we do well, and it's, you know, it's just a good thing for the city. And it's easier for, for residents to, to do, you know what I mean, who want to come in and, and do that, to be able to do that and get paid doing it. It's just a wonderful program, so. Any, anybody else? Any questions for members? Other questions? No? Well, thank you all so much.
Thank you so much for having us.
Good work this year, as always, yeah, thank you. Alrighty, um, so now I'd like to invite those from the Bureau of Fire to join us at the table. And while you're joining, if Director McDevitt would give us the overview of the department.
Thank you, Councilperson. It is the mission of the Pittsburgh Bureau of Fire to protect life, property, and the environment by providing effective customer and human services related to fire suppression, emergency medical services, hazard mitigation, emergency management services, and domestic preparedness. Pittsburgh Bureau of Fire encourages all personnel to take a proactive role in reducing the impact from the emergencies by providing programs related to fire prevention, public education, community relations, risk reduction, disaster planning, homeland security, and operational training. All services provided to the residents and visitors of the city of Pittsburgh, the county of Allegheny, and the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania will be delivered in the most professional manner to the best of their abilities. The Bureau of Fire has the following four divisions, the administration, operations, planning and training, and risk management. Uh, position summary, there are 679 full-time positions budgeted, uh, in the 2026 operating budget out of the general fund, that includes 678 uniformed employees. Um, premium pay has an increase of $1 million in 2026 for a total of 17.5 million. The three-year average spend for premium pay the last three years is just under $22 million. Um, summary of non-personnel changes, overall, there is a $544,000 increase to non-prof, non-personnel expenditures, that includes $370,000 increase for professional and technical services, um, and 500 added for protective clothing and repairs. Um, similar to EMS, there, Fire does not have any projects in the capital budget, but there is the D P W project for Fire Station 20, Medic 12. Uh, for trust funds, they have the Hazarded Material Trust Fund, and they have a number of fees in the fee schedule as listed there for you. That's all I have.
Great, thank you. Well, uh, please introduce yourselves and take it away.
Uh, good morning. My name's Darryl Jones, I am the chief at the Pittsburgh Bureau of Fire.
My assistant chief, Matt Davis.
Assistant chief, Brian Kukila.
Okay, and as with previous bureaus, just give me just a moment to pull up our, uh, slideshow for Bureau of Fire. Um, again, our mission statements are here to kick us off, already covered. Uh, we have our organizational chart for reference. And, uh, then we get into some of the roster information. I'll turn it over to the chiefs to, uh, go into some more detail.
Okay, uh, like I said, good morning, thank you very much. Uh, this is our, uh, count of personnel. Uh, you'll notice that we do have vacancies at the deputy chief's position. And as because that position was moved from a, uh, rank and file position, from a protected position into, uh, a management position, and we are still in the process of trying to fill those positions at this time. Uh, we have 18 battalion chiefs, one deputy fire marshal, and one public education specialist. Uh, we've increased our, uh, number of females in the fire bureau to six, which is still grossly below the national average for women in the fire service, but we are making, uh, progress. And this slide shows what we've, our, uh, run volume over the last year. You'll notice that we have, thank you, a, uh, total of, uh, 548 fire calls, uh, over pressure and rupture calls, 35. The notable, uh, number here is that our rescue and emergency medical services is 18,000 calls. Uh, total, uh, EMS calls cover approximately 80% of our call volume. This is just basically a map of the area. We are broken down into four battalions. Battalion one will include, uh, the North Side and Elliott sections of the city. Battalion two is Oakland and Squirrel Hill. Battalion three encompasses, uh, Shady Side and East Liberty to East End. And Battalion four is, uh, the South Side and South Hills. So we're focused heavily on community risk reduction. Uh, I am a firm believer that, uh, prevention is better than cure. And we have pushed this pretty hard lately. Uh, we have developed specific programs that we work with in collaboration with the operate, uh, the, uh, Department of, uh, Community Health and Services to provide specific, uh, social services to the citizens of Pittsburgh. Part of this is our high utilizer program. In the high utilizer program, we, uh, address our frequent flyer calls. So I'll give you an example, we would get, uh, one lady would call us repeatedly, maybe four to six times a day because, uh, she needed help getting off of her, uh, out of her wheelchair onto the toilet and back and forth and things like that. So, uh, due to our high utilizer program and working with the Office of Community Health and Safety, uh, we've reduced our high utilizer calls and, uh, non-emergent 911 calls by about 60%. We still do the free smoke detector program. Uh, the problem with it is that it is an unfunded mandate. Uh, I am literally out there panhandling for smoke detectors. And I've received some support from, uh, local agencies like the Pittsburgh Steelers, who made a donation to the Red Cross for smoke detectors, who helps us out, we collaborate with them, and, uh, Pittsburgh Cultural District, and just as many, uh, people who have helped out, I've also been disappointed by some broken promises with that as well. Uh, last year, I believe we installed over 600 smoke detectors. Right now, I have a deficit of over 1,000 smoke detectors, that's backlog to be put in. So we want to expand our efforts, uh, but personnel and the equipment is of the critical need. You know, there's a lack of resources there. We want to, uh, improve our community risk reduction. Uh, we are finding that the people who are being affected tragically by fires are at the lower end of the socioeconomic scale. And we need to bolster that area up and provide them some, uh, protection and reduce their vulnerability to fire. So our 2025 operating budget. So this year, we're going to graduate a class of 20. Uh, that's going to happen on December the 19th. You all will be receiving a invitation to attend that ceremony. Uh, we have, we expanded our role in response to penetrating. Uh, we have, we expanded our role in response to penetrating trauma to assess patients. Uh, we act as a force multiplier for EMS. Because we are almost triple, about triple their size, we can get there quickly. All of our firefighters are a minimum of EMTs and they can stabilize the patient until EMS can get there, provide advanced life support and transport. We have upgraded our swift water rescue team. We were certified as a type two A. We are now uh, a type, I'm sorry, type three. We moved up to a type two A. And this will permit us to not only serve the citizens and visitors of Pittsburgh, but now we are trained and equipped where we can be deployed as necessary if the state needs us. We have done several trainings with the uh, helicopter aquatic rescue team through the Pennsylvania uh, National Guard. We had a successful girls camp this year. Uh, this is our fourth year with that. We started out our first year, I think we had five girls. This year we had thirty. Uh, we've seen some fruits of our labors here, where some of the girls who attended the camp in previous years did test to become full-time firefighters here in the city and we're hoping that they can get on. And just recently, we went through a review and analysis by the ISO and we have maintained our Class One designation. Uh, ISO stands for Insurance Services Offices. And what they do is they rate the fire department based on the training, the equipment, the supply of water that's there, code enforcement, there's various uh, things that are taken into account. Just to put this in perspective, there's approximately forty thousand fire departments in the country. Less than three hundred are ISO Class One, so that makes Pittsburgh Bureau of Fire pretty elite class. What does this mean for the citizen? It potentially means a reduction in their insurance costs, especially for commercial properties. Uh, capital projects, we, uh, most of the stuff that we need to do uh, is handled by DPW as was mentioned. However, we do need to protect our people. One of the things that's coming up now is a serious awareness of cancer and we have cancer presumption. Uh, it is presumed that if you're working as a firefighter and you obtain a contract cancer, developed cancer that is due to the job. So to help protect firefighters on the job, we've done things like uh, yeah, hood exchange on scene. Uh, make sure that everyone showers immediately, maybe a quick wipe-off before they come out. And to uh, the gear is extracted, which is just a, a heavy-duty washing machine specifically designed to pull all these carcinogens out of the gear. So each firefighter has two sets of gear and if they're involved in a structural firefight, they take that set of gear, it's sent down to our logistics unit on Railroad Street. The gear is extracted and they wear their second set until they can get their uh, primary set back and clean. Uh, we have started a supply, excuse me, fire hose replacement program. Uh, we in year two of the three-year project. This was also of, of some of the funding that was provided to us through assistance to firefighters grants. And we're also working on a thermal imaging replacement as well. This is our twenty twenty-six operating budget, Charles.
Yeah, thank you chiefs. Um, and again, just uh, for um, uh, public record, we've and for reference, we've included the operating budget proposals for twenty twenty-six here. Just to kind of wrap up and we have a brief summary, I believe Director McDevitt already covered this again, but um, some of the highlights um, or changes include um, increases to supply lines and premium pay. Uh, and uh, expected uh, twenty recruits for uh, twenty twenty-six. Uh, and with that, uh, that concludes our sixth and final slide deck for public safety. Thank you, uh, council and the public for your attention and we hope we didn't put too many of you to sleep.
Great, thank you. Councilman Wilson?
Good chair. Thank you for coming and thanks for those, those uh, stats. I did have some questions about some of the stats before I go on to some other questions. You said that what call was reduced sixty percent because of the OCHS? Partnership?
We call them high utilization calls there or frequent flowers. These would be non-emergent calls to nine-one-one. Uh, people don't have anyone else to call for help, so they dial nine-one-one and we end up going and responding.
Like a lift assist. Where, where's, um, where's that on this incident type?
Uh, let's see, I don't know if that, that would probably be just included in the medical calls.
And the medical call?
Yes.
Okay, EMS, okay. Well, so that number was higher than eighteen thousand then?
No, that's probably including those lift assist are in that number.
But I mean, you said it was reduced sixty percent, so I'm just saying.
Oh, yes, now it would have been higher.
Yeah, it would have been higher, yeah, yeah. Okay, um. There was another, oh, what's a good intent call?
That's a good intent call would be something, that perfect example. Uh, it's getting to the weather change now, right? And someone's going to see steam coming out of the courthouse. And they're going to say, oh, the courthouse is on fire and we're going to get probably ninety of those calls over the winter time. That's a good intent call. It wasn't a malicious false alarm uh, or anything like that, but it's just a good intent call.
Is there any advanced um, technology that's starting to occur for fire departments? Or, you know, across the, the nation in terms of how to, you know, maybe? I don't know. I mean, I'd like to hear what your thoughts on just that general uh, question, but you know, just in general, even like a, like a good intent call, like, I mean, if you are getting calls like that, is there any way to decipher if, if there is any fire that's happening?
Well, uh, Some of these calls will be uh, consistent false alarms. Um, I don't want to name any specific properties, but uh, we know that there are some that always have a trouble with their alarm system. So uh, if there's an alarm comes in there, we will cover that with the first due apparatus, which might be an engine and instead of sending the whole first alarm assignment. So that will reduce the number of, the amount of wear and tear on some of those apparatus. As far as technology goes, uh, as it applies to uh, false alarms, a good intent calls, uh, I'm not too familiar with that. I'm more familiar that newer technology and AI is going towards training and safety for firefighters. So they're always working on newer technology to improve our uh, turnout gear, our P personal protective equipment. And using AI as part of the training is something that's coming down the pike. So it's something that these are changes that we are going to have to embrace and uh, become adapted to and try to adapt them and see how they're going to fit for what we need.
You also mentioned that the people affected by fire are largely fall into the category of like a lower socio, socioeconomic status?
Yes.
Do you see any um, any strategy that other departments or you know, the city or a nonprofit could take on to improve that situation? Imagine we're talking about the structure and I mean, we're talking about just getting a, um, you know, is it as simple as making sure that, you know, houses, um, or people that are living at a certain income? We make sure that they have um, fire alarms or that's, that's just right off the cuff.
And that's, you know, you look at the root cause analysis for this and it, this is a complex problem. So it is not just a, a matter of uh, asking why five times to get down to a root cause. This is a system problem. It involves uh, not only our political system, but our social system and our economic system. There's so many different things that need to be attacked here. Some of it is far beyond my capability and my resources. So uh, when you look at what could be the root cause and you, you research this and I've done research not only for this country, but across the, the world and the uh, other countries, what they're doing, uh, they're using a combination of both technology and some adaptive training to change hearts and minds of what uh, a fire don't be careless about. So there are certain things that we do, uh, that we are so used to doing that we know we shouldn't do. But we get away with it so many times that it doesn't seem to be a threat to us until that one time we get caught. So uh, those are some of the things that we're trying to attack with our community risk reduction program. We're going into, first off, trying to change the hearts and minds of people to be more aware of fire and be fire safe. The technology would be uh, the smoke detectors and training on how to use a fire extinguisher and uh, what to expect specifically from us when we arrive on scene and what we're doing and why we're doing it. So uh, these are things that it just takes time. Uh, right now, my pub ed specialist is uh, Lisa Ebskuta and I only have one, you know, for a city of three hundred thousand.
You only have one what?
One public, public education specialist.
Hmm, I, I'd be interested to sit down, talk to you more thoroughly about this. This seems like.
I would love to sit down and talk to you about.
Alright, thank you. Um, I did have some, some housekeeping things that I, uh, have come up in terms of the budget that we're looking at here, which um, seems there are positions that are not in the budget. For instance, there's a nineteen position, I think you mentioned the, the class that's going to be graduating here.
Yes.
And then we're going to invite to the, which I appreciate all the invites. I know I've been to uh, one of them and uh, and hopefully I can make to one in the future as well. This, this uh, night, this like shortfall in the budget of nineteen, like why wouldn't that be accounted for? Like the nineteen positions?
Yeah, so those are also decisions made with O M B, um, but historically there have been times, I don't know about with fire, but um, where we go over the allowed, allowable budget by council to account for recruits transition year to year. Cause if we, so if we only have the budgeted number, next year would be a good example. If we only go by the budgeted number, that means no recruit class next year, right? Which means we have nineteen extra. If we have twenty-five people leave, we're now going to be six people short by the end of next year, which is going to mean if we don't do a recruit class, then we're going to have chief will be short for another year by the time another recruit class gets done in twenty twenty-seven.
Do we have a recruit class, recruit class schedule, um, not scheduled, but in the budget for twenty twenty-six? Not, not the ones that are graduating in December, but.
As of right now, there is. I'm not sure how many they're planning for, but.
We do have the budget for. Okay, so you're just saying that if they're that O M B may be calculate, now putting the nineteen in there, that we know are going to graduate in December.
Yeah, so like.
Maybe, I just want to finish one thought, because they're they're thinking that there will be some people that leave, like there will be twenty positions that leave and then it'll just fill that gap?
Right, so we do have, you know, people retire.
Hmm, is that true? Like, do we expect twenty?
We usually average between twenty and twenty-five people a year that leave due to either retirement, long-term disability or something like that, that, that.
So is this a typical practice?
It is. And like I said, the police bureau is the one, you know, that's where I've been the most, but back in twenty eight, twenty nineteen, we had a thousand and thirteen officers, but the budget was nine hundred. I, I can't explain why that happened either, but I, I think having a few extra beyond the budget makes sense for that unless you want to create another category for overflow.
Yeah.
And we do have a class um, to address that question. Um, we do anticipate a class of approximately twenty, budgeted for twenty-six, so. For twenty twenty-six rather.
Okay. And then you're saying there is money for the, for like a twenty, twenty-six class? For how many?
Correct, it's, we have twenty, a class of tw- twenty recruits budgeted for twenty twenty-six.
Okay. And then I have a note on the um, though there's a wage rate that doesn't seem like it reflects the actual, I know there was some discrepancy at, at the beginning, but I'm talking about one uh.
Secondary employment?
Uh, well, that.
Okay.
That may be the case. Um, I'll have to get the, the page number on this one. Other recruit, it's a, it's just basically the recruit hourly, hourly rate is uh, stated as twenty-four eighty-six. And then the actual should be twenty-five seventy-five. I don't know, is that true? I mean, is it true that it should be twenty-five seventy-five?
Yes, that's correct.
Alright. So we'll have to make a note on our end, unless we're sending back the budget to the administration, right? There's only way that fix that?
I'm, I mean, we can fix that.
Yeah.
I don't.
Okay.
Yeah.
I mean, I think it results in over thirty thousand gap.
I mean, for that one, they don't have a number of recruits, like they're estimating a twenty, so like if it's actually more than that, we, I'd have, I haven't actually looked at this at all, so it might just be an actual error in the budget and it might account for that total and it's just listed wrong. Or if we can just change the total
Okay.
Or the, the hourly rate, but not the total and then add a class of like nineteen instead of twenty.
Let's just make a note of that.
Noted.
And then for overtime pay, so just trying to understand, so we, I mean, for me, this is all out of whack. Um, I'm trying to understand, not just with this bureau, but and not probably what you submitted anyway. Like I'm understanding, you know, but gone through this for in the past, but it's this year in particular, um, because of last year, yeah, last year's estimate, um, you know, I think we're all concerned. Uh, I think most council members concerned about some of these, these numbers for premium pay. And so when I look at, let's just take this, let's just say we, you know, sixteen-five for twenty twenty-five is that was the projected number, let's, even though I know we're probably over that, right? What's the?
We're at twenty-one million so far.
Yeah, so we have a month and a half to go. We're already at twenty-one million. That's a twenty twenty-four number. So we were expecting telling spend sixteen and a half, so let's just say we just take that, just say the administration was looking at sixteen-five going, okay, sixteen-five for twenty twenty-five, that's way budget. Why, why would we, um, why would the strategy be then to increase it to seventeen-five? If um, staff is increasing? But I guess, oh, I don't know, maybe that's difficult answer because you don't know how many people are going to retire.
Well, even without, um, I mean, our, we know the budget for twenty twenty-five is low. I know Charles can tell you where they're at right now, but.
Uh, yeah, at, as Director McDevitt stated, yeah, we're roughly around twenty-one million dollars in premium pay so far this year.
Okay. And uh, could you give me some insight on, so what was sent over to public safety as to what you were?
I'll have to ask my DBA about that. How much did we send over for, did we put in for the overtime budget for twenty twenty-six?
Well, we can just, we can do that offline. I just want to recognize that maybe you had a different value. I don't know yet. We'll see.
So just, just to speak to our being a little over this year, uh, there were some things that popped up that we weren't prepared for. And some of it was the construction, like in uh, Squirrel Hill, Shady Side, these, uh, they closed the bridge. And in order to make sure that we can provide coverage, we had to staff up an additional truck. So that was an additional thirty-two people that we had to put on that rig all at overtime. And that was not anticipated. We didn't know that that was going to happen. We're working on those communication problems so that uh, we know the, somebody knows these projects are coming up long before the day the barrels go out. The day the barrels go up, you know, and that we need to know about it before that happens. And so then we'll be able to make some adjustments.
Well, we are not investing that much in our bridges. So I imagine this may come up again where we're moving units, so. Yeah, thanks for recognizing that, like possible communication get better with the fire bureau, so. So you're saying you could reduce some overtime if.
Well, I'm concerned that we could have budgeted for this.
A budget, yeah, well.
If we known that this was gonna be an issue. That this was gonna occur. We, if we knew, hey, we gotta cover, there's no doubt we gotta cover the area. We cannot just say, no, we're not gonna cover. That's not an option. So what we do is say, okay, how are we gonna cover?
Right.
Do we need to put an extra unit on? And we've done that up the, for the, I always mess up the pronunciation. Swindle Bridge, is that pronounced correctly?
Yeah.
And then we also had to do it again on Woods Run for a while and now. What's going on in Shinley Park or Panther Hollow, we had to do it then too. So those three times that. We had to stand up an additional unit. Now, for the Swindle Bridge, that came up as an emergency, you know, there was an inspection, people say, oh, don't take anything. Heavy across the bridge. But the other ones, I believe, were plant projects. And we just weren't notified. And like I said, that was just a gap in communication that we've addressed.
Well, the twenty one number does match the twenty four number of what the actual was spent in twenty four. I don't have twenty three and twenty two here, do you? So I mean, it's not unreasonable thing that we might, although there were, you know, every year something come, we can't predict.
I, I can tell you, the only time in the last five years that we have spent less than twenty million dollars on fire premium pay was in twenty twenty during a pandemic. And it was nineteen point eight million dollars.
Yeah, so right there, we're already. You know, the projection here seventeen five, we're.
So.
It could be three, for twenty twenty six, I mean, we could be three. You know, three million over just like in twenty twenty five, so.
Some of this may also be, so you, we discussed the EMS secondary employment trust fund. We are still in the process of setting up and implementing a similar trust fund for fire as was. We discussed that at the table some months back, the creation of that trust fund. And we are. To that point, until that gets fully implemented, a lot of those secondary employment. Pay is, it comes out of the, out of the general fund premium pay line, that secondary employment money goes into the general fund and then back out. To, so, once the. So the fire secondary employment options are also reflected in the, in this premium pay line. So once the, once that secondary employment trust fund. Cycle is, is fully implemented and going, then that would also show a decrease in premium pay, so.
Is there a long term strategy to reduce? Is there a long term strategy you see that this fire bureau could implement to reduce? Such large overtime? Like, is it increasing amount of firefighters?
Well, we are. In order to answer to your questions, yes, we have a strategic plan. That's a five year strategic plan. It will recall, call for some additional resources to be done. Well, how much of an effect this will have on premium overtime pay, I'm not prepared to say right now, but. We do have the plan. If any of you want to see the plan, I can definitely forward that to you.
That'd be great. Okay, and then did have a question about. The. Which I guess would be, you know, workers comment, like an H R question for workers conversation, just like I had for EMS. And that seemed, that looks like that is decreased by twenty percent, so. Just, I'll have to follow up with H R, why they feel that fire. Do you have any? You recall any reason why you think that?
I know we've been.
Such a risky job would have a twenty eight percent reduction?
And I can't, just like EMS, I don't have the numbers to show that we've had a, a reduction in the number of injuries. So I can't speak to why that.
That's one point four million dollars decrease. Not on, not saying you, I'll just ask, I'll reach out to H R to understand that. So I'm just trying to get a tally of all the, the numbers that. I believe are not correct here. And then. There was a comment that. On page one ninety five, that there's an outdated apparatus description. For quints, as the current apparatus.
We don't have quints anymore. We haven't had quints for a number of years.
Yeah, it's just difficult when you see stuff like that in an operating budget, you're like, and you know, like a correction like that, it's like, well.
No, we.
You know, is, what, what else is?
I.
Kind of wrong here?
Maybe two thousand fifteen, we got rid of them, maybe even earlier than that.
Okay, how do we?
Did, did we just use engines? A quint was just a, a rig that had both a fire pump on it to. Pump water and a large aerial device on the top. So it was like a truck then. At some point in time, before my tenure here with the city, someone said, hey. We should buy this cuz it can do both. And then they eliminated the trucks. Well, it can do both, but it can't do both at the same time. It's gotta do either one or the other. And we always use them as engines, so we just replaced them with engines.
Yeah, people just worry there's too much copy and paste going on if we're going back, you know, from the time we were using quints. I had, I had to learn myself what a quint was.
Yeah, it was a while, a minute ago, so.
I read. You know, I just look at a page real quick sometimes and I get the, the word wrong if I don't really understand it. I thought it said Q unit. I was like, what? It's interesting, but it's a quint.
Quint, yes.
Alright, yeah, so if we can just double check that at the. You know, I believe that's probably on. On your side, maybe we can.
I mean, that bureau submits, the bureau and the department submits that to, to O M B to, but it probably is just a. Copy and paste type thing.
Yeah, alright, thanks. And I'll reach out to you about a couple of things, but if you have, you could send that, that five year strategy that you were talking about for overtime. Be great. Okay, thanks.
Great, thank you. Yeah, so, yeah, thanks for being here and for all the work that you do. You know, I have to say, when I first came on council, I was. You know, the Bureau of Fire is a very large chunk of our budget, right? And, you know, it, and. At, you know, when I was initially here, I was like, oh, God, isn't there some, but you know, since I've been here for three years, I mean, I've lost track. Of the number of house fires that there have been in my district. It just, it never occurred to me, just as a, you know, that there were that many. House fires happening in the city of Pittsburgh. And then, of course, this year we had the Jefferson apartment fire. Which was, you know, massive and incredibly scary. And I, you know, really just underscores. You know, the situation in Pittsburgh with this old housing, you know, between old housing stock. Negligent landlords and also just vacant and abandoned properties, right? They were just, I think they were. Was it three houses in Hazelwood just the other day? And I think they were all vacant, but nonetheless, right? These are big fires and. It, it just really underscores how important it is to have a, a quality fire bureau. So I, I, I really appreciate the work that you do. I also did the fire training academy and I highly encourage anyone, is that open to everybody or just? I mean, I mean, meaning like city employees or directors or whoever. I feel like everybody should.
That's a program put on by the International Association of Firefighters Local Number One and it's by invitation as far as.
Oh, it's okay, okay. Well, if you get an invite, go, because it is.
Talk to Ralph about that, he'll hook you up.
No, it's, it's, it's incredibly eye opening. I mean, you know. I think Rep Goganor, who I abandoned in the, in the underground bunker immediately. I just was like, see ya. I abandoned my partner, but anyway. So. So I did, I wanna, so I, I guess I do, I have a few questions about. About the risk reduction and also about sort of in hazardous condition. So, so hazardous conditions calls. Are that, is that like, like my neighbor is doing a, like roasting marshmallows right underneath their deck? Or like something like, what, what, what does that mean hazardous conditions call?
The hazardous conditions calls would be things like wires down or a gas leak or something like that.
Oh, okay, okay, okay. And so. What about calls? Because I have, I have had constituents contact me from time to time about neighbors. Doing things that. Seem unsafe. And I always tell them to call nine, you know, like I said, like, I mean, one specifically jumped to mind was like roasting marshmallows. Right by their deck, right? Or something like that. And so the neighbor's calling or. What, what is the protocol in cases like that? When someone's doing something that's just really not, not, not a smart thing to be doing. And even if, if there has been no disaster, how do we deal? I mean, obviously you come and address it in the moment, but is there any? Program to kind of, if, if that's happening more than once?
So if, if it's something like what you were just describing. We need to have our recreational fires at least fifteen feet away from any combustibles. That's by code. So if it is a continuous violation of the code, then we can. Cite them for that. And we have a deputy fire marshal who will do that and then they will have to go before the magistrate. However, my philosophy is I don't wanna cite people. I want compliance. And what I mean by that is I'm that state trooper that's sitting on the side of the road in plain sight. And you see me and slow down because that's what I wanted to do. I'm not the guy hiding behind the billboard trying to jump you. But if you continue ignore me, then of course citations will have to be written. Other than that, there are chances and opportunities that we use to talk to people. Explain to them fire safe habits. And they are not necessarily formal things like. At least once a shift, the guys are gonna go to the grocery store. Okay, so the rig's parked in the parking lot. Little Johnny's gonna wanna go see the fire truck when he's with his mom. Excuse me, and then while he's looking at the fire truck, mom might ask a question. About something that's going on at home and we give her that advice. Community events such as the mayor's city in the streets, we set up a table there. We, do you have a smoke detector? There we was doing the various things like that, that would. We can help to get the word out and try. And then there's always. Some of the community organizations will schedule something and say, hey, we'd like for you to guys to come out and talk to us about fire safety. But that's what we're trying to do with that. Now, the community risk reduction itself is basically. Targeting the communities that we designated as high risk because we have multiple fires there. And going door to door, what we call Sound the Alarm Program, which is in collaboration with the Red Cross. And we go door to door and do you have a smoke detector? You know, we'll give you one, we'll, we'll put, we'll install them for you. If you call the mayor's three one one line and say you need smoke detectors. We'll schedule a time to get out there. Right now, I don't have any smoke detectors. Like I said, I'm at a deficit of over one thousand. Backlog smoke detectors right now and that, that's scary.
So I, I would love to, cause I know that we, we've talked before about, cause you know, the, the. Obviously, it's just the nature of the job, right? There is a certain amount of downtime, but you're in the station, you know, and, and. Do you think there would, because I would love to have more outreach, you know, maybe like. At the football games and the after school programs and things. I think a lot of the time, especially parents. They don't necessarily, like, I mean, I know for myself, right? Like, as I took the fire officer court, right? You don't necessarily know that you. You know, that there's like whatever, just sort of like that, that room that you have full of clutter. There might be a, an extension cord underneath a rug, underneath a thing. Right? Like the, these fire hazards that are in your home that you don't even necessarily know about, but. Is, is that something that, that could be? Expanded or you, you said you have one person to do the community outreach?
One.
Cause I, I mean, I would be curious about that. I think that would be helpful for people, right? To, to, I, I know we do community meetings. Maybe that's something that we can schedule, right? Like with the neighborhoods, just a way for people to get that information. Do you do events at the, at the schools? Where you talk with the kids?
So we, years ago, we had a, a fire where we lost. A couple of kids and Dr. Lane, I believe was her name, was the head of Pittsburgh Public Schools. And we put in a program called Risk Watch in the Pittsburgh Public Schools. And it was a safety program that was part of the health curriculum that was with kids from grade K to six. Now, I don't know if they're still using that program. I know that the National Fire Protection Agency no longer supports. That program, but it was there in place and Dr. Lane made sure that that was in place. And the program was designed to be taught by teachers who do teach full time. And like I said, it's part of the health curriculum. So once a month, a student was getting some training on. Not only fire safety, but stranger danger, car, automobile safety, crossing the street. A whole plethora across the gamut of safety issues. And they were getting these every year from K to sixth grade. Which is the formative years. So you were hoping that the, the goal was that you would have instilled some habits. For them at that time. Now, at currently, I'm not aware if that program is still involved in place or not. We do work with the Pittsburgh Public Schools on the emergency management site for sheltering. And to be a part of any problems that they may have and, and they work with us as a partner and that, but I'm not. Sure if there's any, that program is still in use.
Okay, well, I mean, I'd love some time to sit down and talk, because, you know, like I said, there's just been, there's been so many more fire, house fires. In my district than I ever, and, and actually, and in, in all the, there've been many in Hazelwood, there've been quite a few in the thirty first ward. There's been at least one or two in Greenfield and of course, the big apartment fire in Squirrel Hill. Yeah, just to kind of get the word out because I, I think that people, and, and also I, I think it's a real. You know, it really underscores how important the rental registry program is and how frustrating it is. That the. What, what's the name of the apartment association of who's suing us? The, the landlord association, who's suing the city? Because they don't want us to, you know, have a rental registry and ensure that, that rental units are safe. And I def, and I, I definitely do wanna continue the conversation. I know that, that you tried to get some sprinkler. Legislation passed and we've discussed that, but, but maybe take another, another swing at that with. Wired alarm systems or sprinklers in the basements and, you know, whatever, maybe something that's kind of like a, a, a compromised middle ground to. To make sure that, that these buildings are, are safe. Cause it was, I mean, at the Jefferson fire, just to see people that didn't even know. I mean, I talked with, we were just like, oh, I just ran out because I smelled the smoke, not because of, not because the smoke alarm went off, not because, right? And that's why people were out like with their pajamas or they left their cat in. They just didn't know, you know, what was going on, so. At any rate, I don't think I have too many other, oh, well, I do, I have one, I wrote here, cause I always have to needle every department a little bit. I did wanna ask about, you know, because the budget is tight and it's something that I've heard about. Is, is this, this, this team? Um, is, is this, um, this, this team that is the river rescue team. Uh, how, like, how often is that, because I know that there's an Allegheny County River Rescue, but they may not be putting out. Fire, they might not have the capability to put out fire.
You're talking about the fireboat team?
The fireboat team.
That's different than, we have our own river rescue.
Oh, we have, right, we have a review, so, so just, I just wanna kind of understand if there's any like redundancy in that, like across departments. And governmental agencies.
So when it comes to, uh, the fireboat, Pittsburgh is maybe the third or fourth largest inland port. In the country, and we move more product up and down our three rivers than the Port of Baltimore. And their international port, and we have all kinds of ethyl, methyl nasty stuff going up and down. So, and on top of that, those three rivers are a primary source of water for any major fire. So, uh, the fireboat is, uh, an insurance policy, okay? It's not something that we're gonna use every day all the time, but it's there for when we do need it. And the guys are highly trained and highly skilled, uh, that's the good news. The bad news is that it is a maintenance nightmare like any other boat. And I had a friend tell me, how many fireboats do I have? And I said, I got one. He goes, no, you don't, you don't have any. I said, no, I got one. He says, you don't have any. He says, two boats is one boat and one boat is no boat. So, uh, I'm starting to, to learn that, uh, but the, uh, we, we do staff it. It's out of the water during the winter because we don't have anywhere to shelter it, but during the summertime, when the rivers are more active. We do need it.
Okay, so I didn't realize, so it's only staffed in the summertime?
Yeah, during the April to November.
Okay, okay, all right, well, um, and then I was, so the girls camp, what is the age for that?
Uh, fifteen, fourteen to seventeen or eighteen, wherever it is, generally high school age, like from a freshman. And, and high school to a senior.
I will, uh, I'm always trying to get my daughter to do, she's, she's gonna do the women in construction camp this summer, I hope. Yeah, but maybe I'll, I'll look into that one, too.
Yeah, it's a day camp, so they come in the morning and, uh, the girls go through, uh, things like physical fitness, dietary. Uh, instructions, uh, they get a chance to, uh, work with the people, other ladies that's on the job. Showing them how to do the basic task of being a firefighter. They are counseled on self-esteem. And, uh, it's a good, it's a good deal. Uh, again, kudos to Lisa Ebskuda. That's, she came to me with that, uh, a few years back with that idea, and I told her to run with it, she did. And, uh, it's been highly successful. I'm very proud of that.
Where, where is it?
It's held at between the Ebenezer Baptist Church on the Hill District is where one of our partner, a community partner. That collaborates with us on that, they feed the girls breakfast every morning and, uh, then all the activities are done. At our Training Academy on Washington Boulevard.
Oh, okay, okay. Well, that's all I have. I really, I mean, I can't tell you how much I appreciate, um, the work that you do. You know, fire is incredibly scary and, uh. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. I would just like to make one comment.
Oh, yeah, please. Oh, you got, oh, sorry, sorry, yeah.
Oh, sorry. I, I just wanted to, to remind people that one year ago today, we lost our brother Battalion Chief John Walsh. In the line of duty, and I want to express to, uh, the Pittsburgh Bureau of Fire, his family. And the citizens of Pittsburgh that we in fire administration have not forgotten, and we pray for him. And his family and that his memory be eternal. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Uh, you mentioned that there was, you have a backlog of, um. Smoke detectors? Can you help me understand that more?
We've, since the Ravenstall years, we've had a free smoke detector program. It's set up where a citizen in, in, uh, will call, uh, the mayor's three-one-one line. And request smoke detectors. We will, uh, call them up, schedule an appointment and go out and give them. Install, not just hand over, we actually install the smoke detector, the number of smoke detectors that required for their home. That's always been an unfunded mandate, and so there's no, I have no money in the budget to purchase that. I've always used donations, uh, people would call and say, hey, we wanna donate to the fire department. Where they send me a check and I'd give it, it goes into the, uh, general fund and I never see it. So I decided, I said at one point, okay, well, what you do is give me gift cards to Home Depot. Because that's where we bought them, and we would go out there with those gift cards. Then there was, uh, previous issues, people getting in trouble for having cards, and I just didn't wanna touch that no more. So I would tell the, the people who wanted to donate to just buy them and send them down to our warehouse. And right now, uh, like I said, I've been out there just scavenging, trying to get them. We have over a thousand people who have called, said they needed smoke detectors. So the actual number that I'm down, if you figure I have to maybe put four in each one of those residences. I'm down four thousand smoke detectors. I'm backlogged a thousand plus calls.
Yeah, how many do you think you need a year?
If I could get four thousand and five thousand of them, that would be good. I requested in the budget money for critical community risk reduction. And I didn't get it.
How mu, how much?
Fifty thousand.
And that was, is, would that be for more than just?
That was twenty thousand for smoke detectors and the other thirty thousand was for programs and things, items. When we do our education, community education. The good news is, so far, uh, we put in a, for a federal grant, uh, Matt. You wanna tell them about the grant we did for the, uh, trailer and everything?
Yeah, one of the things we did for, uh, public education was we submitted to a, um, an educational trailer to be towed around by a vehicle by firefighters. To go out in a community and deliver educational, um, courses, classes, um, just be at special events, things like that. Yeah, like one point two million dollars it was, it was for, so.
Okay.
We haven't been turned down. We haven't received a rejection letter, so.
But in terms of, um, thank you for that, in terms of smoke detectors, twenty thousand dollars would reach how many homes?
The smoke detectors are roughly sixteen dollars a piece.
But I mean, twenty thousand dollars, you, you, as estimated, you could, you, you could spend in twenty twenty-six, right?
Yes.
And then how many homes would that reach?
Well, if I do the math, I didn't, sixteen dollars a piece, then that would tell you how many I have and an average of four of them per house.
Three hundred and twelve, oh, okay. And those are based on three-on-one calls?
Yes. Now, the other smoke detectors that we do have, we received a grant several years for was, uh. Fire detection devices for those who are, uh, deaf or, or trouble hearing. And we work with this center for, what's the name, Center for Death and Hearing Impaired on. Uh, Fifth Avenue in the Upper Hill, Lower, Upper Hill District area, we collaborated with them. Uh, we received that grant for those and, uh, we work with them to assign the people who are, who qualify to get one. And we'll go out, install it in their home, and Lisa will train them on how to use it. Now, this device isn't just a smoke detector for, that gives off a noise, it, uh, had comes with a, uh. What they call a pillow shaker, a device that goes under the pillow so that it will vibrate, uh, it has a strobe light. And it also has a little like pager device on their belt because not everybody spends all day in bed. So if they're in a different room of the house and something's going on, that pager will let them know that there's a problem. Those devices we, we receive because of a federal grant, and those devices are like four hundred dollars a period, a set, each one. But we do have those and we work to put those up as well.
All right, well, thank you, thanks.
Um, that'd be interesting actually to talk with procurement to see, I mean, rather than buying them individually at Lowe's. I mean, is the city, you know, we could probably get quite a bit more if we bought them in bulk.
Get a bulk rate.
Get a bulk rate. Get them at Costco. We can get them on Amazon, twelve-pack for seventy dollars.
We use the one with the ten-year battery. And it's.
They got those at Costco.
Dual sensor with ten-year batteries and they, uh, so there's no changing the battery. After ten years, you throw it away and you put another one up.
Yeah, you know, I have the, um, there's wireless ones too that'll buzz your phone if you're not home. So, anyway, any more questions? Well, thank you all so much. Thank you, Director. Thanks, Charles, for being here. And then, um, yeah, with that, can I have a motion to recess this meeting?
You don't need, it's a move, yeah. In a second.